Tonight, we will now kick off the workshop for the Manville City Council meeting on May 5th. We started at 5:00 PM. Council, this is a rarity. We have a workshop without an executive session. So let's make good use of it. The first item that we have on the agenda is discussion amendment, discussion on the amendments to the zoning ordinance items. We're well versed in this. Joe's gave us an update. We had a public hearing at our last meeting. So what I'd like to do is open it up to see if council has any comments or questions about any of the items and we'll kind of break it down item by item and then we'll begin working through the rest of the council agenda. So the first item that we have is going to be the tree preservation ordinance. And I want to start off with just saying thank you to staff on this. You know, a dream was put out there. An idea was put out there and in collaboration with our working group, you guys put together a very well-rounded ordinance. Thank you to the working group, Councilman Oplager, Landz and Bonner for your guys' work on this over these past few months. I'm glad to see this finally come to fruition here. And want to see council, if you guys have any comments or questions as it relates to the tree preservation ordinance? Oh, we good with it? We like how it looks? Alright, you guys did such great work. There's no questions or comments. I think one of the things that I liked that we discovered was the way our ordinance was previously written, you were required to plant trees in the right-of-way that would be impacted by the power lines as they grew older. So that's been changed, correct? Awesome, awesome. Alright, well, good work gentlemen. Very excited about that item. We will now move on to the next one, which is going to be the specific use permit item regarding the hospitals. Where we had some restrictions on hours of operation and the way it was drafted with Bobby and Joe's and the team is that if essentially state law supersedes, then we go with what state law says. Does council have any comments or questions about that agenda item?
Which one is it?
Nope. This is going to be agenda item number seven as it relates to emergency rooms or hospitals that the state says have to be open 24/7. Now, a question I would have for staff, this also applies to hospitals, correct? It's not just emergency rooms, but it would be any of the qualifying facilities if state law says something different for a permit or whatever it might be occupational code, that would apply.
That is correct, Mayor. And we've included that for other personal services as well. Now, we don't have any state requirement that would apply to that, but for hospitals, ERs, there are elements in the legislative, within state codes, and it may not be all in the same, but there are references to 24 hours of operation for hospitals and ER. And that's why we've included that for each of those items to be consistent.
Thanks, Joe's. Alright, council, the next one for zoning ordinance items, it's agenda item number eight. And this is updating to the 2022 version of the NAICS codes. Looking through it, it's a lot of cleanup that's occurring, renumbering, etc. Council, do you guys have any comments or questions for staff as it relates to agenda item number eight? Nope. Okay. There we go. Love it. Alright, so with that, we now have 55 minutes left in the workshop, guys. Let's start working through the agenda. One thing to let council know is I was informed that on the consent agenda, we will need to remove items number three, four, five, and six. Number three and four are not ready yet, and number five and six are duplicates of other items on the agenda. So we'll take those off and then we will take no action on those. So just to give you guys a heads up about that. Yes, sir.
I have a question about number two.
On the consent?
Yes, I just want to, I know I read the letter, so I know what the percent, I mean, what the total was, but is there a way that we can see or at least tell us what's the amount of increase in dollars? Is it like $3 per month or does that work out? I saw the total fee was 25 something, I think.
Yeah, I think Tammy Bell has something here.
Yeah, so I sent Matt a message to ask him and he said that the current residential cart with recycling is going from $24.37 to $25.10.
Okay. I mean, I know we can all look on our bills, but I just thought we'd make it clear for people that might be listening in.
Yeah, and I believe Tammy, Matt is going to be here tonight, so we'll have him present before we adopt the consent agenda if we have any questions for him. And this is Tammy. We don't have a say. We can't say, "No, you're not going to raise it because it's built into their contract," right?
Correct.
Good question there, Councilman. Dan, we'll kind of just start working through some of these items on the agenda. I figured let's cover number one first. This is about the possible action to award the Acre Lake Phase 1 excavation to Sprint Sand and Clay. So Dan, can you present that item to us and we'll see what questions we have?
Sure. As you know, council, this is something that hasn't been done before in Manville in this manner. And when we started looking into it further, it was hard to find anybody else that had done, that had put together a specific contract like this. People contract with companies all the time to pay them to dig a pond, of course, but you know, we were looking for sort of a creative way to get this pond dug at hopefully no cost to the city and maybe even, you know, pay ourselves back, so to speak. And so we had a great pre-bid meeting. It was a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Had about 10 different firms represented, then had a site visit, and I think all of them went and checked out the site. And so it seemed like there was a lot of interest, a lot of excitement. When it turned out to do the bid opening itself, there was actually only one bidder, but it's Sprint Sand and Clay. And obviously, they're a very well-known company in the area, have done many, many projects, big sand pits in the area. So we vetted them, you know, I mean, that one's pretty easy to vet, but the offer, if you will, is that it would be $5,000 a month as a sort of a rental, a lease, a license, however you want to word it, to the city. And then for every dollar, excuse me, for every cubic yard of sand that they remove, the city would get a dollar for that. And that's loose sand. So they obviously have to track what they sell. And so they'll provide the backup documentation for us on a monthly basis showing where they're at. And then we're going to work through this in the contract, but every so often, what we talked about doing is they'll actually do a LiDAR survey of the site to confirm that how much was actually removed from the site as well. So anyway, a dollar per yard of sand, and then also they put in a dollar per yard of other materials. So there's about 12 or 13 feet of overburden, which, you know, topsoil and those kind of things could be some clay. If they're able to sell that, then the city would get a dollar per yard on that as well. So we're looking at about 4 million yards of tight materials. So when you project that out, it's, you know, probably in the $5 to $6 million range. They've asked for up to 10 years. And of course, that's going to be dependent upon the market. If they sell sand like there's no tomorrow and they get it dug in three years, then that's great. And if it takes eight years, then that's okay too. So candidly, it would take several years to dig it anyway if we were paying somebody to do it. But at least this way, again, with the $5 to $6 million, we'll recoup the cost that we spent, that the city spent to purchase the land. I think we decided it was about 2.5 million. Is that right, Rosie? Whenever we purchased the property? Somewhere between 2 and 3 million. And the reason it's, because there were a couple of different parcels there that were involved and then obviously the realtors fees and those kind of things. But anyway, the punchline is it's more than that. And so hopefully, you know, if we, depending on what council wants to do, as the money comes in, we can either put that away for the park when it's time for that to come and just keep holding that away. Rosie and I have, I put in the data sheet, we could put the 5,000 per month into one account and then the dollars per yard into a different account perhaps. So it's, and I'm not sure if, is that Sprint? No, no, I don't think we have anybody here. But they're going to be, assuming they'll be able to get in with the rain, they'll be here in a little bit. But all in all, I mean, we're pretty excited. And we still have to work through the actual contract. But everything's exactly what we were hoping for and more, I think.
So Dan, do you know why the other companies decided not to bid?
So Robbie checked into a couple of them and some of them were, hey, we're just not quite, they were candid about it. They said, "Hey, we're just not a big enough operation to be able to take on something like that." One of them said that, "Hey, we've looked at the numbers and we would actually have to charge all." The other ones, I suspect that there's probably going to be some partnering going on. In other words, they'll, you know, maybe one of them helps with the pug mill, one of them helps with the trucks and those kind of things. So no one just said, "Hey, this is a horrible project. We don't want it." There was a myriad of different reasons.
Councilman Bonner?
Once they're finished, there'll be some side work to do to get it like we want it. Is that going to be additional cost or is that within their contract that they have to leave it like that?
That's a great question. So that's part of the contract is that they have to leave it with the side slopes and the maintenance berms like we want so that we don't have to do what we've had to do out at Dolores Martin Park and add sand back to it. Now, to go through and hydromulch it and get germination going, everything like that, I mean, it would, we'll have them do it, but it would be a pass-through and we'd have to pay for that.
Is there a minimum distance they were going to leave?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's either 80 or 100 feet. It's pretty sizable, all the way around the perimeter.
Dan, a follow-up question. Where will they be accessing? Is it off of 1128 or is it off of Jordan?
They'll potentially have access off of both is what they've asked for. And it's just going to depend, you know, we're going to have to work through a traffic control plan and all that kind of good stuff. The beauty of getting on and off of Jordan is they can get onto Meridianah Parkway quickly and six, and then they're out of town. You know, some of the references that they used were the builders that are building in Meridianah. So it's conceivable that they could just, you know, literally just go right there to the south and sell sand to them. So, but we'll still have to work through the details of exactly, you know, once we sit down and go through the contract.
Because that's a concern. I've seen the impact of the dumping of the sand at Dolores Martin Park just over the past few years. This is a 10-year-long process, then we're going to have to consider the road repairs. And, you know, they need to be quality road repairs because these are both very heavily trafficked roads.
Yes, sir.
So we'll have to keep that in mind.
The, when we are looking at the traffic study that you just mentioned, Dan, have we done anything of that? Or are we just looking at it like they're going to come in on either Jordan or 1128? Because to Dan's point, it's pretty brutal driving back here and then those big dump trucks, they're destroying. And it's not like for five, six months, it's every single day. How many trucks go in and out a day?
At Dolores Martin Park? 30 or 40 probably? Yeah. 60?
60 a day. With one trip or multiple trips? 60 trucks though, moving in and out all day long. Yeah. So what are we doing to mitigate that? If at all. Because I just heard you say it was close to Highway 6, but that's going to really, if we're looking at 10 years of, and I imagine this is bigger?
It's about the same size, actually, yeah.
I'm sure they were done, right? How many trucks do you think are going to be moving every day?
Like, we'll sit down with them and go through. I mean, that'll be part of the entire package. Okay, when are we going to get started? What's traffic control going to look like? You know, we'll have to iron all that out for sure. If we want them to stay off of 1128, then we'll need to tell them that, if that's what it sounded like. Is that kind of where we're leaning?
It's going to be congested. I mean, I don't know. I think we need to see the data and find what the right...
Yeah, because you have the, and we'll go to Councilman Landz next, because you have the pork chop issue. Whenever they try to use Meridianah Parkway, then you got the railroad tracks and you've already got it rough right there. So I think, Dan, if we can build it in as a milestone, that once they're ready to begin, you guys have hashed out this package. I'd like to see clear numbers. I'd like to understand exactly how much we paid for it. And then to understand the traffic impacts too, because there's a component of it where we're going to have to inform the community and let them know as to what's coming, why is it happening, why are they seeing these trucks? But then understanding, to your point, Mayor Protem, you know, which street is going to be best? Because as we look at it, it might actually be where 1128 is best. Well, let's see that data there.
Do they have to pay for the road repair? And how do they know when that triggers in?
There are, I guess, the road, what are they called? Heavy haul permits? Yeah, yeah. That they'll have to put in place. So that's something that we'll have to work out because again, they're digging this pond for us, right? So...
Well, let's not think they're not making money off of it either.
Of course, of course.
Councilman Landz?
I have a different kind of question. So I think this is the first time the city has done something like this. You know, of course, this is new to us. We don't, but my question is, Bobby, the method we did of a closed bid on this, is that required by law on this kind of situation to have to have a closed bid? You can't do an open kind of internet bidding situation or anything like that? Are we bound?
There are, you know, different ways you can do city projects and you can do one on just straight price, but that's basically almost like a bid. And we do it on more like proposals where it's based on price plus maybe time. You know, how fast are you going to be able to complete the job versus the other guy? And those factors can be ranked. So we put out for request for proposals and that's typically the way you would do it on a larger thing like this. You don't necessarily want to get the price and then be the only factor. You want to look at maybe their experience, the timeframe and stuff like that. And typically, that's done in a request for proposals, just like we did it.
Well, I think, Bobby, I think to his point, he's wondering about, maybe not, I want to use the terminology closed bid, but it's a sealed bid process. And can you explain why that occurs?
Just the way state law requires it to be done.
State law requires it.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's what I want.
I'm sorry. I guess I read more into your question than you were asking.
I was tracking with you there.
Thank you.
Well, and the other question to that point is, so only one company submitted for it, is what we're saying? But we did go out there and ask for people to bid, had the bid meetings, and only one submitted for it.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a red flag? I mean, what questions did we ask ourselves? Like, why is just one? Like, what is not right about this? Because in any business, y'all are very familiar with RFPs. Why? That, to me, is kind of alarming.
The biggest part in it was not every one of those companies that was on that list had the trucking capability.
But there's plenty of others that are building, that are digging sand pits around Manville, that are digging them here, that are digging them elsewhere. So what about this specific project discouraged people from bidding? Anyone?
All we've heard is sighs so far.
Okay, so because of that, of us telling them, "You have to pay us. Here's an opportunity, but we want you to pay us to make money off of our, off of our land."
Yeah. I mean, that was, the general feedback was, again, it was a very big project. There, I think most people are used to us paying them, you know, whatever it is, $10 a yard or something. Instead, we're asking, "How much are you going to give us for our sand?" It was just very, sort of a foreign concept. But I mean, if this works, which it seems like it should, then I mean, this could be a whole new way of cities being able to get their ponds dug, you know?
Where did that idea come from?
I suppose me. I'd say me. I mean, Kyle and Bobby, really, y'all thought about this years ago? Just kind of bringing it, another one of those, you know, lots of ideas float around out there and then, okay, we got to figure out how to get this into fruition. So I guess I'll take credit for that, getting it across the finish line. But the concept, I don't know, Bobby, you could probably...
I think Dave Smith is the one that first alerted us to the fact that there's a lot of value in that sand. And unlike a regular construction excavation project, you hire somebody to dig the hole. Hire somebody to dig a hole and what they're taking out has got a lot of value. So the original thing was that you may be able to offset the cost of buying that land if you can structure it so that we can capture some of that cost of what people are going to sell. And that's kind of started the whole approach that way rather than just a strict excavation project. It had almost like a mixture of purchasing services and the sale of sand. It's like, almost like a purchase and a sale all in one concept. So it made it kind of difficult to structure the request for proposal documents. But having somebody that's willing to pay us on a large project like this, and from what Dan's numbers are, it looks like, you know, we will get paid back a lot for the land that we purchased like that for an amenity, which the taxpayers come out way ahead that way.
It's definitely interesting. Since it's never been done that way, it'd be interesting to see how well this goes. What are some hiccups that you guys have foreseen that could come out of this because it's never been done?
You know, I was hoping that, you know, we would have multiple bids only because, you know, if one is, hey, we think we can dig it in five years, but we're only going to pay you 50 cents a cubic yard. Or we think we can dig it in 10 years, but it's a dollar, you know, just sort of, yeah, sort of to see the different packages, you know, in my mind, that's what I was hoping we'd see. You know, we didn't get to see that. So a dollar, is that the right number? Could we get more? I don't know. I mean, if we rebid it and we only get one bidder and it's still them, well, then it might be 50 cents, you know? So I don't want to do that. And all honesty, the number, and it's, I didn't tell another human being, but just sort of in our minds, I know me specifically, it was like, if we could just get a dollar per yard. And I don't think I vocally said that anyway. So it was kind of spooky whenever that was the exact number that we ended up seeing. Again, it's 4 million cubic yards at least. So pretty easy to do the math on that, you know, a dollar per yard.
Okay, it'd be interesting. I really would like to see though, in those numbers, like Mayor Dan said, looking not just at the land, but on how it's going to affect our roads. Because they do, I drive down 99 constantly to get to Baja and Friendswood. And you've got those trucks that are going up 35 onto the road and those roads are destroyed. They're horrific. And all day long, you're contending with big trucks that are coming in and out, in and out.
And that's something we put in the contract that, you know, they have, the roads still have to stay passable and they have to stay clean. And if they mess them up, then they have to fix them. And we just put that in the contract.
Okay, love that.
Which, that would be the case no matter who won the contract, whether we were paying or they're paying, you know? Somebody's got to dig 4 million-plus yards to get this hole that we want. It can't stay on sides. It's got to go somewhere. I guess the fewer roads that it travels on, the better. You know, if we can get them to Highway 6, which is concrete and candidly not maintained by us, that would be, the quicker we can get them to Highway 6, the better, right?
Until we start hearing from our citizens on Facebook, calling us out, tagging us. "We've got holes here," pointing at us, and then we say, "Sorry."
Yeah. But we, like I said, we put that in the contract and...
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Sure.
Any other questions here, council? Hearing none. I know items number two and three will have a little bit more discussion. So let's knock out a few others here. Let's move to agenda item number four, which is the design modification request. I believe the applicant will most likely be here during the regular meeting. They were at the PD and Z meeting. But if we can just get a staff overview of that, or Joe's, would you like me to, would you like to wait until your team member is here for that?
We can, we can talk about it.
Okay.
So this is, this is like an appeal to the city council to approve a design modification request to allow for asphalt, crushed asphalt, crushed gravel-type driveway temporarily for one year. The applicant has built a new home at 7619 Scott Avenue. And the plans that were submitted showed concrete driveway. And as a background, our design criteria manual allows for asphalt or concrete driveways, basically hard surface requirement. And the applicant has submitted a minor modification, a design modification request to allow for crushed gravel or crushed asphalt kind of material for the driveway. That request was denied and the applicant is requesting the city council to reconsider that decision and allow for the kind of driveway he's requesting for a period of one year because he has indicated that within a year, he would like to construct a concrete driveway. Now, the reasoning is, at one point, city of Manville required concrete driveways. Then we also started allowing asphalt driveways on streets that are existing streets, that driveways that connect to existing asphalt streets. Now, since then, the goal is to reduce the number of driveways that are not hard surface in order to achieve durability and making sure that there's no dust, gravel, runoff onto the right-of-way and other problems that can be caused. So the applicant is requesting reconsideration on this. And the applicant is willing to do from the street to the property line, a concrete apron to connect to the street. But within the property line, the applicant is requesting crushed gravel, crushed asphalt kind of material. That's the background on it.
Thank you, Joe's.
Oh, by the way, the Planning, Development and Zoning Commission recommending, is recommending approval upon agreeing on a development agreement between the city and the applicant indicating that within one year, the driveway would be constructed in concrete.
Thank you, Joe's. Council, any comments or questions for staff right now? Joe's, I have one here. It looks like the exhibit that was provided by the applicant, there's a note there saying it's not accurate. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So if you see on the application, the applicant is saying that the concrete portion would be from street to the property line. However, on that exhibit, I believe whoever marked that up was looking at the building line to be the property line. So that's what the discrepancy is. So the concrete portion would be from the existing street to the property line. So that portion would be in the right-of-way and not on the private side. So on the private property itself, the driveway is going to be crushed gravel, crushed asphalt.
Okay. Now, you said all along, the plans that were submitted and approved were concrete. And during the PD and Z meeting, the applicant said that it was a cost barrier for him, which is why he wanted the year.
Correct.
The year delay. Is there a reason why he's not proposing just to go the entire driveway as asphalt? Since that's now allowed if it's a cost differential?
So his indication was that his final goal is to have concrete and putting in asphalt, it would crack. And then it's an extra cost to take it out and then add concrete. So he was just hoping to get that temporary relief and then the concrete driveway be put in after a year.
Okay. Because I, I mean, we've seen in past scenarios where we give leniency for a year or for some time and it comes back to bite us in the butt. Kirby, Charlotte are two examples with developers. There's another example where they wanted us, lift station wasn't complete, correct? And it didn't have power. So they come and they say, "Well, just let us, give us the permits to build the homes and we guarantee you..." say, well, just let us, give us the permits to build the homes, and we guarantee you, you can put it in the agreement, we guarantee you that the lift station will have power by then. Well, guess what? The lift station didn't have power. The homes were now ready. And now the home buyers are upset at the city because they can't move into their homes, but it's because somebody said that they will do something later. And I'm talking with Councilman Oplager, he, he used to have crushed asphalt, and it's good for the first six months, and then it's not, not too fun after that. We've also had scenarios where we've had applicants sitting in, in here wanting to build their homes and say, just give me this variance, give me this SUP. And then they go, and once they get it, because they're trying to lower their costs, and they go and they sell a week or two, a week or two later. And then the people that buy are now upset because we allowed something to be built substandard. So I, I struggle with this one. I struggle with that based off of precedence. I want him to be able to build his home. I want him to move into his home. That's why we allow asphalt driveways instead of concrete. But I just, I've struggled with this one. It's, it's tough. It's tough. Just kind of processing my thoughts out, out loud there for, for counsel. I'm not sure where I'll stand on this. Well, I'm sure the applicant will be here, and we can ask him some questions. But I just, I struggle with that. Councilman Bonner?
I struggle with the fact that he's going to have a permit for occupancy, and that's going to be the only thing that you can hinge, hinge on for, if he doesn't do that. And that's where Presidents is going to sit in sometimes to get him out of the house that he's been living in for a year. Is that going to be difficult, Bobby?
Well, what you do, you'd have to file a, basically give him a ticket for every day of being in the house where a certificate of occupancy is being revoked. And, you know, residing in a structure that doesn't have a certificate of occupancy is actually, you can get a ticket for that. And that's really our jurisdiction municipal court is just a fine only ticket.
No, just, that's what I worry about here. I mean, I'm kind of in the same boat as you. I, I see what he, what he thinks he want to do, but things change.
Because, Joes, he doesn't have a certificate of occupancy right now.
Not at this point. He's in the process of getting some of the inspections done. So the house is pretty close to completion, and he may have already done a couple of inspections, but he's at that stage. He hasn't moved in. And one of the reasons he's also requesting is that if it is not approved, then the house stays unoccupied for a full year or whenever he's able to get the driveway done. But on staff's side, the challenge is that we have these requirements put in place so that we can eventually get our non-conforming driveways to conform. And the number of non-hard surface driveways go down rather than go up. So that's why we're not able to approve, because like y'all said, we do share the same concern that once the house is occupied, it becomes a difficult situation, a challenging situation, if everything doesn't go as planned.
I think Mayor Martin said this during the PD and Z meeting, and it stood out to me. The applicant has said since the beginning that they wanted it as concrete. From the very beginning, that's the plans that have been approved, that's what they, that's what they submitted. And I'm somebody that's very much, you follow through with what you say that you're going to do. Now, sometimes circumstances come up, so, okay, well, go to, go to asphalt then. I guess, why is it that we, that we don't want to, I want to hear it from staff, why is it that we don't want to allow gravel driveways or crushed asphalt driveways? I think you mentioned, you mentioned some points there, some runoff potentially into the right of way. What kind of, what kind of negative impacts could there be for surrounding property owners if this is allowed? Because at the end of the day, for me, look, if a property owner wants to do something on their property, I don't care. It's your property, do what you want. But it's the impact to your neighbors what we have to be concerned about. So what are those negative impacts?
Well, and I'm, I'm thinking about the gravel roads that we've spent the better part of a year converting from gravel to asphalt, you know, for, for some of the same reasons of just, you know, the upkeep and the maintenance, and then, anybody that's ever lived on a gravel road, you know what happens? It, it sticks in your tires, and now it's down the road and everything else. And so now you've got projectiles, you're riding a bicycle, and now you've got a limestone chunk in the middle of the road. If you ever hit one of those and flip over the handlebars, it's not enjoyable. Not that this would prevent it, but if we can do our part, I mean, I think that's, that's the thing, is trying to minimize how many new gravel driveways we have, quite frankly. So the, the asphalt give was, was a good one, that, I guess, was that two years ago where we, where we opened that up? If, if you, if you marry up to an asphalt road, then your driveway could be asphalt. But I'm, I'm looking in his packet from, it looks like on page two. I mean, his plans go back to October of 2023. And like you said, Mayor Martin pointed that out. It clearly shows a concrete drive even all the way back in 2023. So it's, it's not a new thing, I guess. But, so, safety is part of it. Obviously, the dust that can come along. I mean, I don't know if I should say aesthetics, but I mean, that is. I mean, if we're trying to, you know, change the, the landscape somewhat. Robbie, anything else you can think of that y'all struggle with gravel driveways?
No, it's mainly like the dust and runoff and stuff like that.
So this would be gravel, or this would be asphalt, crushed asphalt?
Crushed asphalt is what has been requested. But we're saying that it comes under the same realm, gravel and crushed asphalt.
Anything that's not a hard surface, I guess, is the moral to the story.
Exactly.
And then Robbie, you mentioned, you mentioned runoff. What do you, what do you mean by runoff? Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so, so like, when they put it down, if it's not compacted right, if it's not done right, it's all just going to wash out when it rains. And then you're going to have it just running through the ditches or wherever it goes.
And could it get clogged in the ditches or in culverts?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so it wouldn't get clogged, it would just keep-
It'd just keep running off, and they got to keep putting material in and stuff like that.
Well, but it, it can. I mean, obviously-
Yeah, it could, yeah.
It keeps building up.
Over a period of time, it could.
Yeah, and then we have to go jet them out in culverts, yeah.
Councilman Bonner?
So he mentioned he didn't want to put asphalt down because it would be harder to dig up than the crushed, the crushed asphalt?
Well, what he said about asphalt was that he, he used our, our parking lot as an example. It's like, you see all the cracks and everything. It doesn't look, you know, it's not aesthetically pleasing. And, you know, you get cracks in the asphalt, so that's why we want concrete. So he said that he wants concrete, he's just said he doesn't have enough money to do it.
I understand that, but for the temporary fix, to hold him until he can do that, I'd much rather see asphalt there than the crushed, because like you say, it's going to run off.
But I think the, the crushed asphalt was significantly less expensive than the asphalt as well, so.
I'm kind of like the mayor, he's been planning on this forever, so.
Could we, I mean, we have some time in the workshop until we get there. Could there be a rough calculation of the cost differential between if it was concrete, asphalt, and crushed asphalt?
For him as a homeowner?
Well, do we, do we have that?
I think he has those numbers.
He has those numbers?
He does, yeah.
And I don't see what that does, because-
Oh, I'm just curious.
A thousand dollars to me versus a thousand dollars to you, that can be two different things. So.
Because I did some research online. It is significantly cheaper going crushed asphalt to asphalt. But it's, but still, he's paying for crushed asphalt, to then a year from now tear that up, to then do concrete. It just seems like, you know, Rosie could speak to this from a budgeting perspective. That's not wise budgeting. If you're going to do something, you want to save costs, do asphalt. And if you do it right, then it's going to last you for, last you for a while, but, okay.
I guess the one, the other thing I worry about, if he, if he gets turned down for this and has to have the house sitting for a year, what impact is an empty house to the neighborhood also?
How often do we see homes that are asking for this type of?
I guess, I, this is-
One, one every couple of years, maybe?
Yeah, this is the first one I'm seeing.
What it is, what it was, I, I should have driven by there. I, I do it every once in a while, but not for this item. What are the neighbors? Because there's a few new home builds. I think those are all concrete driveways, from what I remember, correct?
That's correct. And that is one more factor in staff not being comfortable approving it, because there are several instances where people wanted to do gravel or crushed, some sort of a non-hard surface, and staff had to make them do it. And they all complied, and they moved forward on this. So, yeah, some of the houses, new houses over there do have concrete. And, but the applicant also pointed to some of the other locations where there are gravel driveways. And we did not get into a whole lot of research on when it was done, but there could be many different reasons for why they are the way they are. And the goal for staff is to not allow new non-hard surface driveways.
Well, counsel, we'll have the applicant, hopefully the applicant will, will be here tonight. If he's not, then I will recommend we postpone this until the applicant's here. I think that's only fair. But we can ask the applicant questions at that point if we'd like. Anything else for this agenda item tonight? Okay, agenda item number five. This is a variance request for two acres. They want to, it looks like, subdivide, so that way they can create two single-family residential lots. Talk to us about that one, because this is a Rose Sharon address, but yet it's coming before Manville City Council. What's going on here, team?
Joes, you want to talk about that one? Down, it's around Pilgrim's Point and Quaker and, and all of those areas. So it's ETJ technically. So subdivision ordinance still prevails. So the issue is the right of way, right? So it would, it would be two acres, except for the right of way dedication.
It's one of the areas where lots were previously subdivided and established, and development happened several years ago. And they, those subdivisions and development and creation of right of ways, those never happened through the planning process that we have right now. So we have a situation here where there are two existing lots, which the applicant wants to subdivide and plat and develop. And as part of that process, they have to, they're required to dedicate a portion of their right of way to the city. But once they dedicate the right of way, their total acreage gets reduced slightly from one acre. And at that point, it's, it's not in conformance with one of the provisions of the subdivision ordinance, which requires that for lots that are not served by the public utility services, have to be at least an acre. So that's the variance that is being requested. And we see this situation often in areas which are developed without the proper planning process, where the lots are created to be precisely one acre, and then the road is shared between the two lots across the street. And when you dedicate, you're carving out a portion out of that one acre. And for lots that are within the city limits, we've included an exception in open single-family zoning district, where if the lot size is reduced to 0.85 because of right of way dedication, then we do consider that as a conforming lot. In the ETJ, since we have that specific language carved out, we, the subdivision variance is the only process by which we can get that approved. And staff is recommending approval because the reduction is minimal. We do not have a formal letter from the council, but based on some communications, sorry, the county, we do not, but we, based on some of the communications we've had, we, we understand that even with the reduction, they won't have any issues in terms of getting their permits for the well-inseptic. So that's why we're recommending approval.
Awesome. Thank you, Joes. Any comments or questions from counsel? Hearing none. Let's move on to agenda item number 11. This is about possible action on a Manville Fall Festival and a proposal from an organization to help us, to help us run that. Who do we want to have introduce that on staff?
Well, I can get it started. So the idea of, of a music festival or, or a fall festival came about, I guess, kind of Bobby and David and Keith just talking about the idea, the concept of, of doing something like that. And we, gosh, a couple of years ago, we met with even, what, like the Lions Club, we met with the folks in City of Alvin, just to kind of see what other cities do. It's sort of a new thing. Obviously, we don't have a Parks and Rec department yet. We don't have a special events person yet. So, you know, we, we explored the gambit of any, and, and it still could be. It could be anything from, you know, two acoustic guitars and, you know, in the, in the new city hall park area, or it could be something on the new 160 acres, you know, a real huge music fest. So kind of looking at all the different things in between. And so one, one idea that, that you have before you in the packet is, one thing that we realized quickly is the expertise in house. And, and what I mean is, putting on the Easter extravaganza, that was absolutely amazing. I was so proud of our team and what they did out there. It was fantastic. And I think with what we have right now, that's probably our limitations, you know, trunk or treat, those kind of things, the parades at Christmas time. For right now, would you agree, Tammy?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Because every, right now, every, all 111 employees have a full-time job already, and special events is not one of them. So we, we talked about the group that came and presented last year, your neighborhood farmer's market. If you recall, they, they came in and they were, that was before we had the Manville Market. And so the idea was that, hey, they can do a turnkey type situation. If you, if you remember, they came to a couple of different council meetings, and it wasn't really a good fit for the farmer's market idea. And, you know, we're very blessed to, to have Manville Market and what Colleen's been doing with that over, just a little bit over, over a year now, right? And so we've reached back out to this group to see if that's something they could help us out with. If, if we wanted to have a fall festival out at Croy Park in October, could they help us out? Basically, it's, what do we call it? It's not a turnkey, it's almost a turnkey. What'd you call, call it? Was that Mayor or Keith?
It was an insert key.
Insert key, yes. It was not completely a turnkey, but pretty close to it, where they could arrange the stage and, and the, and the bands and the, the booths and the restrooms and, and all of the things. And we would help, obviously, the city would help pick out the different things and the flavor and whatnot. And, and we would still have a, a Manville Market component to it. We'd help, you know, they'd hopefully present us with a couple of different options of, of who could potentially perform out there. Anyway, so they're interested. They put together a proposal, just kind of regurgitating back some of the bullet points that, that we gave them. But we've, we've reached as far as we can go, and we need to get this in front of counsel, obviously, because this is a couple of council members' idea. And if it's, for whatever reason, not something that all of counsel wants to do, then we need to know that. But if it is, if it is something that all of counsel is interested in, then obviously October is getting closer and closer. So is that kind of a good jumping off point?
Yeah, I think that's a good, a good summary. We can dive into it more in depth, because I think maybe there's some key questions that you guys might have, Dan, about, you know, do we want a beer and wine, wine garden, and what's the hours? And if we do it later at night, you know, does that increase the, the cost? My understanding, Dan, is that this would be paid for, at least within year one, paid for from our hot tax fund-
Correct.
-which we have more than enough money to cover that. But the thinking needs to be, how do we sustain this in the future? Because there's only so much money in the hot tax fund, and we would love to use that for other items.
Right. And, and the idea of, of having somebody help us, you know, with the first year, and, and we're, we're watching, we're very involved, and we're watching, okay, that worked great, that needs some work. Okay, yeah, that, I don't know, it's going to be years before we can take, take that on at a staff level. You know, I, I highly anticipate having an, an events person or a parks person, you know, working that into the budget for this year, if that's something that counsel wants to keep, keep going, you know, special events. We're going to need somebody that's, you know, got some expertise in that. But this first year, if we could have somebody, again, as close to turnkey as possible, I think that would really help things out. Because we want it to be a success, you know? We don't want to piece it together and then, eh, we're not going to go, you know, nobody wants to go back to it. We'd almost rather, it'd be so awesome that we're having to turn people away. Hey, nope, this is all the people we can handle, you know?
I love that. One question, Mayor Perotan, and then we'll go to you.
Yeah.
I, I, I love the idea. I, I know staff is, is tapped out to the max with planning events, and staff does a phenomenal job with the extravaganza, the involvement with Forest Fest, the trunk or treat, and the Christmas, the Christmas parade. So I love it. I'd be in, in support of it. I want to thank Keith, David, Bobby, I know, Tammy, you were involved, Robbie, Chief, Lisette, and Brian, and kind of this working committee to say, all right, let's work through some of these specifics, and let's get a proposal forward, and then have a discussion as, as an entire council. So thank you guys for doing that. I love a lot of the elements in this. And now it's going to be just kind of working through some of those, some of those details. So I appreciate that. Mayor Perotan?
Yeah, my question would be, so the intention behind the festival, I think we all have been asking for it. We love the idea. But then there's a big financial piece. And what was a big turnoff in the initial proposal was that we were paying them to host this, and they were making money off the vendors, because that's what events do, right? That's what festivals do. They're moneymakers. And whether you charge a ticket, an entry ticket fee, or if you make it free to the public, there's money to be made there. And so I would just like to see what those financials, the projections look like, and if we're just going to pay them and budget for them to put the, the event on. But who's going to monetize all of the vendors, all of the, all of the things that do draw the money? Because most of them have to pay an entry fee, all the things that come along with that. So that's, that's the other part. So that's, that's the other part that I don't see in this proposal at all. There's no numbers.
Right. And this is just really a scope of work. This isn't a contract yet, because, again, we need council's blessing, you know? If this is really something we want to do. If it's through this particular group, then, I mean, that's, that is, they're not a non-for-profit group. It's not like Mamvel Market. They're for-profit, absolutely. So what we did talk to them about was if council wants to have the sale of beer and wine perhaps, then the city might want a portion of that.
The city will want a portion of it.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, for sure. Because that's, that's why people do events, right? Is to generate an income without, you know, charging your citizens more taxes. But if they're going to come, we're going to bring people from all over the city, it's an income-generating activity, which I think we would all love. And it's really exciting to hear this. This is a beautiful presentation, but yeah, I'd love to see more numbers on that, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Thank you.
Councilman Lance?
No, another approach we could have is if they, and we talked about, okay, if the, if the city, if, because this is one of my first things a year or two years ago, was like, I wanted the city to see if they could handle the beer and wine, because that's going to be the moneymaker.
Yep.
It was brought up in our last meeting that, well, that's great, but if someone drank too much, and got out there on the road, and something happened, they're going to point fingers back at the city, because we're the ones that hosted, that fed that wine and that beer. It's like, okay, if they do the alcohol, yes, we can else get a portion of it, or, like I said, we're still working this thing out, you know, all of us, or a reduced cost, you know, the, and then, but that's one or two ways of doing it. Get a percentage or maybe a reduced cost of the whole, the whole shebang, you know?
I can see where, where, I already am getting messages from people like, oh, margaritas, just joking. I can barely finish one. It is my middle name, so I joke with it. Happy Cinco de Mayo, y'all. But I can see where that is a concern. However, I hear both sides. I hear people who are in favor of it, like, what's the big deal? I drive down the road to Pearland and drink anyway, and then drive home here and then have the accident two miles from my house. Or, you know, what someone chooses to do with their own moral code is up to them. And really, that's why you have TABC, from my understanding, and trained people that don't over-serve. You have to know what you're doing and who you're serving. And, and that's where, if we hire the right people, then they hire the right people to then, to then do that. I mean...
And maybe that's something that we need to look at as far as a liability viewpoint with...
Exactly.
Our insurance companies, whatever else, say, hey, if this did happen, you know, we're, you know, because we don't want our insurance to go through the roof, you know, or, so. I was all for us funding, or not funding, but doing the drinks, you know? Because I think that would be a big return for the city. And maybe a year, two years down the road, we can, we can tackle that.
Yeah.
I think the idea, the first one, is just, let's get the baby steps. Let's get the first one out there, learn a few things...
Yeah.
And build as we go.
I, I think it's a touchy situation, because I think we all would love to have a festival. We, I think we're all sold on that. However, who's ever gone to a festival and there wasn't, I mean, alcoholic beverages for families to enjoy responsibly? Now, you look at cities like Fredericksburg, that have literally built their economy on being the wine country of Texas. Come and drink wine. It's a little more classy. It's not as, you know, don't want to make assumptions.
Walk down the street with a beer.
Right. I mean, hey, to each his own. But even, even Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo has raised millions off the wine garden for scholarships. And people drive and they leave there, but, you know, they're trained to not over-serve. So I like the idea of something classy, something nice, like a wine garden. But we do have to be very careful when it comes to what's acceptable, what's not, and the perception. You know, how do we want this to be perceived?
Councilman Bonner?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm all for the wine and beer garden here. But I do like the idea of the city not having the liability there. And having just gone through, looking at this same thing for the Lions Club, right now, there's only one company quoting that insurance, and it's high.
Yeah.
Okay? So I don't know with this company if they already have that in place. I kind of feel like they do, or they have the context for it. But I would rather see that liability be on them, at least this year, when we're learning.
That makes a good point. That's a real good point.
What I, what I like about this is, Councilman Lance, you said it, it's a start. It's a start in the right direction. It's delivering for the community something that they've been asking for, for years now. And as I look at it, there's something for, for everyone. When you look through the list, there's the vendor market, there's a pumpkin patch and a kid's zone, there's the music entertainment, there's a food, food truck court. There's a lot of exciting things. And once you do something once, people begin to recognize it. That's why the Mamvel Market's so successful now, because it's been consistent, and people know, for Saturday of every month, you go to Mamvel, you go to the Mamvel Market. So I could foresee it in the future, we start to get some organizations involved in facilitating some of this. Maybe when it gets to the point where we do the beer and wine garden ourself, it's sponsored by the Mamvel Lions Club. And then they get trained, and they help us facilitate it. This is going to be something that is going to be an evolution, not a revolution, and it's a step in the right direction. So I love it. And so, Dan, tonight, this is, you're asking us to basically give the yes, we're looking to take the, looking to take the next, the next step. These aren't the final terms, there's still going to be some items to work through, but...
Right. So there are, there are three different things on your agenda tonight, items nine, 10, and 11, all to do kind of with, with Croy Park. Because if, if that's where we're going to have this fall festival out at Croy Park, obviously, we don't have enough parking out there. So Rosie's figured out a way that we could fund a parking lot expansion, if that's something that we want to do right now. So that, again, this is all kind of new to council, so it's a lot all at once. But if we want to do a parking lot expansion, we, we can. If we want to do it by October, we can, but we can't wait too, too long either. So those two components, and then the item that we're talking about right now, item number 11, is yes, if, if you like this idea of a turnkey or insert key option, we need your approval to do so. Yes, sir.
All right, sounds good. And we'll discuss items nine, nine and 10 together, council, once we get to that point in the agenda. So we're at five minutes, Tammy. I guess just real quick, agenda item number 12, this is a special called City Council Meeting for next Tuesday to canvass the results of the election. Is that correct?
Correct. So that meeting will be, if approved, next Tuesday at 5:00. Typically, for the canvas, we do not need a quorum. However, since we're going to have a runoff, we will need a quorum, because we will also need to order the runoff election, and that will be on the same night. So unless you have questions about that process, the agenda item is just merely to schedule that special meeting.
Okay. And then, Tammy, what are the dates going to be for the runoff?
So early voting, the first day of early voting is going to be May 27. The last day of early voting is June the 3, and the runoff date will be, voting day will be June the 7.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that Sunday is off, just like it normally is?
Correct.
So Saturday, in the same hours, it's 8 till 5 through early...
So I haven't gotten the county hours yet. Typically, yes, they stay the same. Last year's, or the year before, they gave us one option on one date, to see if we wanted to open the polls on that date. So I haven't seen that come forth yet. But yes, typically, they are those same early voting hours.
Okay. And just one other question, Tammy. What is the estimated cost for us to host a runoff election?
So I don't have that estimated cost, because it all depends on what other entities are holding elections at the same time, because it's all split. So if we're the only ones, it's going to be quite costly. If there's multiple things that'll be on the ballot, then we divide it amongst each entity.
Okay.
Last time, when we get to the irregular action item, I'll have that total for you. I'll look it up and tell you what that last cost is.
Just curious, because I've had people that have asked me, and I've said, oh, I think it's about 10, but I just was...
I want to say it was a little more than that, but I, I'll let you know. I'll look it up.
Sounds good. Thanks, Tammy.
That would be a good thing to look at in the future, to see if we want to continue to be where you go, somebody in the runoff, or if we just go with other cities that just go...
So the only way you could do that is do a charter amendment, because any time you have three-year terms, it automatically put us at that rating, where we had to have the majority vote.
Okay. So we could, by charter amendment approved by the voters, could go to a plurality?
You could, with a two-year term, not a three-year term.
Oh, so you'd have to, so three-year terms required by state law to be a...
Correct.
Okay.
And when is the next charter review commission? Next year, right?
Next year.
Oh, this year?
No, it's next year. It's every five years.
Been it in 11?
We did it in 2021 last.
26.
26, okay.
26.
Awesome, all right. Thank you, Tammy. Any questions for Tammy about that, council?
Just want to know how much it is, how much it's costing taxpayers.
Yeah, I'm curious. All right, so council, we have a few minutes here. Let's, let's recess, and then we'll reconvene here for the, for the regular meeting. Let's recess and then we'll reconvene here for the regular meeting. We will call this regular session of Manville City Council to order here at 6:05 PM. We have seven of seven members present, and we have councilman and the Reverend Ed Perry, who's going to lead us in the invocation tonight. Councilman?
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight to say thank you. God, we're so grateful for the opportunity and the privilege to gather together as a community, to discuss the business of our community, and to take care of the needs of our community. We thank you as councilmembers and city leaders for the privilege to be servant leaders, and we ask that you would crown our heads with wisdom and knowledge as we make decisions, Lord God, that will be pleasing to you and beneficial to the people. We ask that you continue to bless this community, continue to bless every individual citizen, bless every family, every household, every business that is present here, Lord God. We ask that you would have your way in our community, and we'll continue to give you the honor, the glory, and the praise in all that we do, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, councilman. Next, we have the inspirational reading from Councilman Bonner.
I really didn't see anything on that, and I missed that.
We know you read the agenda.
I guess one of the things that I've been thinking about for the last couple of weeks is, in watching all the election stuff and how people interact, is that I hope that the citizens see that people care about and are passionate about the city that are running for the election, and I just want everybody to take a step back a little bit and understand that every one of the people that run for an election aren't running for any monetary value, they're not running for any glory, they're running just to serve the citizens of Manville. And I hope that you appreciate each one of those that run, whether they won, whether they won or lost, or in another election runoff. They all care about each one of you, or they wouldn't be putting themselves out there because it's a stress level that you just don't understand until you've been there. And I just hope that everybody continues to treat people that don't have the deal where they didn't win, they have to be treated just like you would treat anybody. They're still a citizen of Manville, they're probably going to be serving on different things that we come up with and different boards, they're going to be your neighbors and still your friends, and I hope we don't develop any animosities there just from the simple act of trying to serve the community.
Thank you, councilman, well said. If you can, please stand and join me in saying the pledges. First, to the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Tithes, One Say, Under God, One, indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we have a few presentations that we will give, and so counsel, if you can please join me in the front for these presentations. All rise.
How many do we have?
Three that we have to give. I like how we were able to move the podium and no squeaking this time. Finally got it fixed there. Thank you, Chad, appreciate that. All right, so the first presentation that we will do tonight is going to be for National Police Week. So we have a lot of our Manville Police Department, a lot of our law enforcement officers that are here, so I'm going to go ahead and read this out, and then we'll have you guys come forward, and then either we'll let chief or our assistant chief go ahead and give us a little speech, talk about how great our police department is. Just kind of giving you guys prep there so that way you can think about what you're going to say, or we could have Michelle do it, so. No, Michelle said no, absolutely not. So this reads, whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Manville Police Department, whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 37th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2025. And whereas the Candlelight Vigil is a part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year on May 11 through 17, and whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore I, Dan Davis, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Manville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 11 through the 17, 2025, as National Police Week in the city of Manville, Texas, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. So if you guys will please come forward, we'll present this to you guys, and then we'll take a photo. Applause. So we're going to let chief say a few words here, and then we'll take a photo.
First, I want to thank mayor and council for this presentation. It's awesome to be able to recognize the men and women of this police department. Been here, working here and now going on 13 years, I couldn't ask for a better group of individuals to be able to work with us, to protect the community. As you can probably see, there's a lot of new faces that are popping up. We've had a lot of increase in our staff over the past year, and we're going to continue that increase throughout next year, but I can't say anything more than just, you know, this is a good group of people, a good group of individuals that we have on our staff with us today.
Can we get y'all to squeeze in, trying to get between these two young ladies? Understand it is not comfortable. Crystal.
You're very young.
Yeah, so I actually.
I was perfect, right?
Yeah, Eric, can you get your note in there? It's the mayor. And same thing for her on this side. Thank you very much. We missing any council members? One, two, three, and one, two. Thank you so much for everything y'all do.
All right, the next proclamation that we have is going to be for National Public Works Week. Mr. Robbie, if you could come forward here, and I'll begin to read this off. This proclamation reads, whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of Manville, whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other infrastructures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Manville to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas this year's theme is People Purpose Presence highlights three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in the communities every day, meeting the needs of the people is what gives public works its essence of purpose. And whereas many times, public works professionals will never meet those whose lives have been impacted as they work in the background to advance the quality of life. Now therefore I, Dan Davis, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Manville, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 18 to the 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the city of Manville. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to let my public works superintendent tell y'all what a great team that we have.
Thank you. On behalf of Public Works, I want to say thank you to council, mayor, the city, for this proclamation. We take great pride in our services that we provide to the city, and we appreciate the great support from the city. We have a great group of guys, a lot of these guys, they come in day in and day out and give it their all to support the city, so we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Now, Patrick, you went to Hightower High School, is that correct? Okay, so Patrick went to Hightower High School, but he works for Manville because Manville just keeps beating Hightower in the playoffs. We beat them in the first round of football, we beat them in the first round of softball, so we appreciate you working here for the. I know, I saw you wear that color, I like it, I like it. All right, so we'll take a photo here, guys, squeeze in here.
One, two, three, and one, two. Congratulations.
So now, we actually have some special certificates of recognition to give out tonight. These certificates of recognition are going to be given to a teacher at our junior high school as well as students. These students, a part of a team, were selected as one of the top 100 teams in the United States to compete in the 2025 American Rocketry Challenge National Finals. And so we want to recognize them for their dedication, guidance, and passion for STEM, and for the innovation that they are helping bring, and not just to the Manville community, but to the nation. So what we'll do is we'll have, I'll call out the name for each person that's receiving this certificate of recognition, and then we will have their teacher, Madison Hanks, say a few words about the competition. Councilman Perry, if I can have you hold these for me, and I'm going to read off one at a time, thank you. So can Madison Hanks, please, come forward? Next, we have Nathan Sue. Next, we have Kevin Ramirez. Next, we have Ishan Surapaneni. Did I say it? How was it? You got to correct me here, I probably butchered it. Say your name into the microphone for us.
Ishan Surapaneni.
Ishan, Ishan, well, there you go, Ishan, congratulations. Next, we have Daniel Martin. This is a rocket ship, not a missile, all right, PD? Next, we have Daniel Rodriguez. Next is Carl Ummali. Careful there, we got to figure out something about this here. There we go. All right, next, we have Anders Freiberg. May not be coming, so I'll give that one, too. Round of applause for Anders, just in case Anders wants to come online. All right, Madison, you want to tell us a little bit about the team, and then we'll take a photo?
All right. No whiteboards. So this year, the Manville Rocketry Team, our club, had two teams. This year's competition was to build a rocket from a just spare, this is cardboard tubes, laser-cut fins, 3D-printed parts, from scratch. They had to build a rocket to carry two chicken eggs to exactly 790 feet and then land within a three-second window. Every foot not on target was one point, every second outside that window was four points. The lowest score wins out of two flights. Our team here to my right got a total of 20 points over two flights, so they are top 100 in the nation. Over 1,001 teams competed this year across 46 states, over 5,000 students from middle school and high school, this is of the seven years doing this program. This is the first time we were invited to Nationals. And so next week, we are, 15th is next week, right? Yeah. Next week, we are flying to DC to fly at Nationals just outside of Arlington, and am I allowed to shamelessly plug? Okay. So we are fundraising, I am trying to, we do have a GoFundMe for the Manville STEM Rocketry Team. We are trying to raise money to buy airplane tickets and to pay for the hotel. We've got seven of us going, so I, shameless plug, I have flyers, everything helps. All right, thank you, and I cannot be any more proud of these boys.
Congratulations. Don't do this to walk you right there. Have you come up right here, shift over, here we go.
I don't think I'm one of the kids. Right here, one, two, three, one, two.
Everyone good? We need more, good? Good? All right, congratulations. Please let us know how it goes, we'll be rooting for y'all. All right, all right, all right, as Councilman Lance said. So we have one more recognition to give tonight, and Chief Trailer, I'll turn this over to you.
I'm fixing to mess this computer up here, probably. All right, good evening again, counsel. Tonight, I would like to recognize Sergeant Nathan Peters for his nomination of Officer of the Year. It's a great pride and sincere appreciation that we recognize Sergeant Nathan Peters of the Manville Police Department for his outstanding service and nomination for the Officer of the Year Award. This recognition is not tied to a single achievement, but rather a series of exceptional contributions that reflect his unwavering dedication, initiative, and deep commitment to both the department and the city of Manville. Sergeant Peters consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty, setting standard of excellence that inspires his peers and strengthens community trust. His efforts have left a lasting and positive impact on our department's operations and the quality of life in Manville. A few highlights of his contributions include one of the department's first certified drone pilots. Sergeant Peters played a key role in launching the USA UAS, I'm sorry, drone program. He developed deployment procedures, trained new pilots, and has logged over 60 flight hours, enhancing our capabilities with public safety operations. His leadership in the City of Manville's Teen Court Program has shaped the future of over 150 students, with 50 graduating in 2024 alone. His mentorship has instilled responsibility, civic awareness, and life skills in countless young participants. Sergeant Peters has also dedicated his time and energy to the Teen Citizen Police Academy, fostering positive relationships with youth and inspiring the next generation of law enforcement professionals. Since his promotion to sergeant in 2022, he has streamlined vital processes by authoring procedure manuals that improve clarity and efficiency in areas such as affidavits, jail operations, court procedures, and field training. In 2024, his proactive patrol efforts led to numerous arrests in high-crime areas, and he continues to share his field expertise, reinforcing a department culture, building on mentorship, collaboration, and continuous growth. Sergeant Peters' leadership, professionalism, and relentless pursuit of excellence embody the core values of public service and the mission of the Buzori County 100 Club. His commitment to both the Manville Police Department and the community he serves makes him exemplary candidate for the Officer of the Year Award. On behalf of the entire Manville Police Department, we extend our deepest gratitude to Sergeant Peters for his tireless efforts, and we proudly stand behind his nomination.
Thank you, chief.
That's your turn.
Tell us, tell us how much you like cyclists.
Well, I will say this. So I, I am. So I don't live in Manville, but I do consider myself part of the community. As chief will tell you, I can be very passionate about the community also, even has to calm me down a little bit at times. But the thing is, is just like all of you, and I'd like to make a point.
So Chief, who's watching the city right now?
They're all off duty.
They're all off duty, exactly. All right. Mr. City Manager, what do you have for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Just three things I wanted to mention tonight. The first one being the pipe bursting project that's been going on in front of Manville Seafood and Autozone, that whole strip. If you recall, that's where we found a 24-inch sanitary sewer that was in really bad shape. They've completed that work, other than the dress-up and cleanup. And I know Robbie's been going by and visiting with all of the property owners and business owners, just to make sure that, before the contractor leaves, that everything's good to go. But anyway, I want to report that that's finally done, thankfully. The second one, I actually see Colleen in the audience, so I was going to mention that Manville Market is actually relocating to Redeemer in July, is that right? Yep. So just wanted a shameless plug there, because hopefully, you know, we will be under construction here before too long here at City Hall. So we gave her a heads-up and just happened to find a good location that's still on Highway 6 and has some good visibility. So I think they're going to do one more, I guess in June here, and then July will be over at Redeemer. And then the third one, Mayor, if it's okay, here in a little bit, right before the regular agenda, Joe's update for Director of Development Services, we were actually going to do that as part of the City Manager update. Is that okay? Okay. Good, Joe's?
As part of that agenda, we also have included a little snippet that talks about all the development that we've had in the past one, almost a month. So it's got a list of pre-development meetings that we've had. We've had meetings ranging from a wedding venue on Tankersley, a group that was considering multifamily, a bank on Highway 6 across from Manville Town Center, a few commercial projects on Highway 6 and other locations. And then we also had a large master plan subdivision sort of meeting. But I want to, as always, give a disclaimer that a lot of these projects may not end up, a lot of these meetings may not translate into a project. In terms of certificate of occupancy, we've issued a certificate of occupancy for the church at McCoy Disciples Christian Fellowship Church, First Liberty Bank, UPS Store on Highway 6, and then an office for East Texas Gulf Coast Regional Trauma Advisory Council right here at the intersection. In terms of new ground-up construction approvals, we did not have any within this timeframe. And in terms of an update from the department, we do have GIS map link on our website, which is available for the citizens to track ongoing development within the city. It includes a list of recently approved plaits. It'll have a list of recently approved certificate of occupancies, a list of recently approved commercial ground-up construction. Now, again, this is a new initiative, so we are, it's a work in progress, so to speak. We'll keep it up to date, and we'll do our best to make it better in the coming days. That was it.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Joe's. Would there be a way we could put out some promotional posts on social media, let the community know that's out there, maybe a little training video or something like that? That's exciting, and I know I get asked, probably as well as Council, what's coming, what's going on, what's happening? And that's a great tool and very excited for us about that. Thank you. So Council, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There, we're going to be some, a few items we're going to remove from the consent agenda. But before we take any action, I do believe we have a representative from Waste Connections that is here tonight to talk about the CPI rate adjustment. Hello, sir. Thank you for being here. I know we met you at our last meeting officially, and tonight you're here to share with us some information.
Yes, so this is, this is part of the contract with the city and Waste Connections. It's our annual price increase. This goes off of, it's based off the CPI rate that is published at the beginning of every year. This year, the rate was, is going to increase 3%. And what's part of that, it's mainly driving is labor costs and disposal costs at the landfill. Just this year, we received a price increase from the landfill of about 7% on all disposal. So that's just what's included in here, and I can answer any questions that y'all have.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from Council? Yes, Dan?
Just a quick point, you said three out loud, but I think it's actually 5.3, right?
Um, no. Hold on one second. That should be 3%.
So the initial letter that they sent us on March 12th, has the 5.3, did it change from that one? So they sent us another one in March? Or you guys delivered it, actually? I don't have that.
This one should be, this one's the correct. It should be 3%.
Well, it's even less. We're fine with, we're not going to say no to that. So are we, because we don't have the official letter, are we still able to take action on this tonight? Or we're just accepting the update? Maybe this is the official action, if you can, Tammy, there.
Yeah, I can email it over to you. Yeah.
Do you want the paper copy too, Tammy?
Can I, I'll just make a copy and give it right back to you.
No, no, if you're here, we're not letting you leave.
It's good to be the king.
Councilman Bonner, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I think we're good to go. Appreciate it. I also want to say thank you. I saw you guys, you guys gave out a scholarship at the Manville High School Scholarship Banquet to a local high school senior here in Manville. So thank you, guys, for doing that and giving back to the community.
Yeah, no problem. We like to give back to the community.
Absolutely.
Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you, sir. All right, Council, any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Councilman Lance, if you can unmute yourself.
So items 7, 8, 9, and 10, are there any cost reflections on these? Or is this, is this built into the budget? Or what's, I see these approvals, infrastructure improvements. So how does that work, budget-wise, for the city?
Sure. So those are our normal water, sewer, drainage, paving, those, those projects. We have to accept the infrastructure, so a developer builds the infrastructure, and then there's a two-year maintenance warranty period. So then anything during those two years that is a warranty defect will get repaired by the contractor. There's a maintenance bond that tracks along with that, just in case the contractor doesn't fix that. And then after the two years, then it becomes the city's to maintain.
And so I think to Councilman Lance's points, for each of these pieces of infrastructure, do we know what the cost is for these, and are we planning depreciation and liabilities for the future?
You know, they, that's a great idea. So all of the, we have the costs, certainly, that go into my gov and everything else. Our system is not that robust yet, but it certainly will be whenever we can track how many feet of sidewalks and paving and all that kind of good stuff. The detention ponds, those remain, the maintenance of the HOA or the mud, depending. So it's really the water and sewer and the paving that we would need to start building in and forecasting. But we don't do that yet, but that's absolutely a great thing to track, sure.
Thanks. Yep. Councilman Bonner, you're muted.
So we do know ahead of time.
Hey, Councilman Bonner, you're muted.
So we do know ahead of time about when these are going to come up. Do we not think about that during the voted year prior to when that's going to happen?
You know, I think that's a great idea to start including that into.
I mean, obviously, the first couple of years, you would hope that we did a good follow-through on the inspection before it turns over, that we shouldn't have a lot of cost.
Right.
But I just think maybe we need to start looking at that of setting aside, I don't know if that's a new line item in the budget for this, so that we don't have to go out of general fund for repairs. We maybe have a fund there, and I know we're starting to talk about some different things there, too, but.
I know. I love it. I think it's a great idea.
Councilman Bonner, and Councilman Lance, to your point, you know, we did that first. The first kind of foray into something like that was the street maintenance program, was getting an assessment of all of our streets. When do they need to be done? What's the projected cost? And so I think this, Pearland did it a few years ago, where they have now a comprehensive asset maintenance program, where every screw that they have in a box has a life cycle, has a projected replacement cost, and then they can set aside the funds every year to prepare themselves for the, for the future. So I'd love to talk about that more when we get to budget season, and that's been a passion of mine to see that, see that done. Good question, gentlemen. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none, Council. I would like to make a motion to remove Consent Agenda items number 3, 4, 5, and 6. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now, Council, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Do I have a second on that? We have a second from Councilman Lance. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. We will now, for items removed from the consent agenda, take no action on Agenda Item, Consent Agenda Items Number 3, 4, 5, and 6, which then leads us into staff presentations. We covered the development update from our Director of Development Services. We now will go to the Valencia PUD Annual Update. We will, looks like we have Mr. Bailey here to give this to us. Bailey, thank you for being here tonight.
Mayor and Council, I'll quickly give you a background on this one. City of Manville has several master plan communities and development that were approved through a PUD process, which is basically a zoning district that sets a development plan and allows the development to happen in phases and on a, on a specific timeline. So as part of that approval, one of the requirements is that the developer provide regular updates to the city. Up until now, most developments we've, staff has always received regular updates, and this year onwards, we've reached out to some of the PUDs that were approved, so that they can give us an annual report that can be presented to the Planning, Development, and Zoning Commission, as well as the City Council. And Bailey from Valencia is here to present the first annual report on Valencia.
Awesome. Thank you, Joe's. Bailey, please proceed. I'm going to step out for one moment, but please proceed.
Good evening, Council. Bailey Quadra, I work for Hillwood Communities. I am the Development Manager for Valencia. Our PUD was originally approved in 2021 and in the fall of 2021. Right now, we have 623 platted lots, as of y'all accepting that infrastructure in Section 10. We have 55 homes, homes under construction. We have about 150 completed homes. We've reached about 127 sales, and we now have 80 residents. Our average sale price is about $512,000. You know, if we project out that average sale price for the life of the community, we have a total of 948 lots planned. I think that Valencia provides about $575 million worth of taxable value to the City of Manville at build-out. We'll have another 20 acres of commercials. We have 83 acres of lakes that are now about 99% constructed. We'll have a rec center called Orchard House, which is under construction. It'll have a pool, pickleball courts, meeting area, food truck area. We'll also have two one-acre parks that are currently in design. From an infrastructure standpoint, we've invested about $70 million to date to construct Pollard, Charlotte, and these internal sections, sections 1 through, 1 through 10, and now, and now 16. Things are, things are going well. We've nearly exceeded our sales from last year, so we have about 61 sales on the year. Last year, we had 64. I think Valencia has really started to pick up some momentum. It's been a little bit of a, you know, it's always a little bit slower than you think it is, you know, thinking back to 2021, when we originally approved the PUD. You know, we always hope things move quicker, but I think we finally have some momentum. Things are going well. We're proud of the community, and, you know, we're, we're here because we want to, we want to be good partners to the city, and we take pride in the communities that we develop. And we want our residents to have pride in their home and feel that sense of community. So we're really striving for that. You know, we're happy with, happy with the progress, and, you know, there's, there's a lot more still to come, such as the construction of Dogwood and Charlotte, and then the Western Lanes of Pollard. And, you know, just to close out, I think if you've driven Valencia, you know, we currently have the two Eastern Lanes of Pollard open, where we've had a pre-con for those Western Lanes, and they'll be under construction, you know, as of this week. So I really think that that'll help open up the community. It'll provide additional mobility and significantly improve public safety for, for our community. But we like being here, you know, we're, we're happy, we're proud to be in the City of Manville, and yeah.
Great. Thank you, Bailey. Council, do you have any comments or questions for Bailey regarding this annual report? Love the annual report. One question I have, not to put you on the spot here. Have you guys been able to get some of the, the citizens' complaints regarding the, the gas bills addressed? Has that improved, or where's, where's that at?
You know, so we have not, the gas bills came down as, as we, you know, as we suspected. Our residents probably consumed about 60% of their annual gas that year. And we do acknowledge, I mean, the Centric, we are using Centric, just to catch y'all up to speed, we are using Centric gas and fiber as opposed to CenterPoint. Their rates are a little bit higher, and we did receive, our residents did receive higher bills during the winter months, when, when gas consumption was high. Since then, we have not received many complaints, but, you know, the rates, the rates are a little bit high. The benefit of going with Centric is ease, ease of install and then flexibility on work schedules. CenterPoint does not provide any flexibility, you know, for gas install. It's quite challenging to work with them, and, and Centric provides a solution to that. And then just, you know, last, last subject on that, we think that our, in Valencia, we think that our fiber and gas stack is about $1,900 on an annual basis. Compare that to Blue Water Lakes, or Del Bella Lakes, or Lakeland, we think that their fiber and tax stack is closer to $1,700 or $1,650. So we think there's about a 3, 250 to $300, you know, annual difference. Now, that, and that is real money, but, but it's something that we're monitoring, and, you know, it is something that, you know, we understand the residents' frustration.
Thank you, Bailey. One more question, the northwest corner of Commercial AO2, what are you guys constructing there right now? Is that going to be another monument entrance sign?
We do not have it current.
The, the other, the other side, so AO2.
Okay, yes, we do. That's a, we, that's our entry monument for Valencia, and what, what we're, we're going for, our vision is a, is a modern fruit stand. And so there will be planters, what's, what's left to go right now, we just dropped the sign in today, are planters that we will, you know, will have lots of color, and it'll be sort of like a trailhead, if you will.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we appreciate that update. Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Council, we will now move to our regular agenda. We did cover Agenda Item Number 1 in the workshop. Were there any, do we have a representative here from Sprint? Okay. Sir, if you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself, we had a robust discussion during our workshop about this, so there might be some questions and comments from Council, but we appreciate you guys bidding on this, this project, and look forward to the potential to work with you all, so.
Yes, sir. My name is Matt Strickland. I'm the Vice President of Sprint, Saint and Clay. You may have looked through the, the bid for some of the information we provided, but we own an
The benefit of going with Centric is ease of install and then flexibility on work schedules. CenterPoint does not provide any flexibility, you know, for gas install. It's quite challenging to work with them, and Centric provides a solution to that. And then just, you know, last subject on that, we think that our, in Valencia, we think that our fiber and gas stack is about $1,900 on an annual basis. Compare that to Blue Water Lakes or Del Bello Lakes or Lakeland. We think that their fiber and tax stack is closer to $1,700 or $1,650. So we think there's about a $250 to $300, you know, annual difference. Now, that, and that is real money, but it's something that we're monitoring, and, you know, it is something that, you know, we understand the residents' frustration.
Thank you, Bailey. One more question, the northwest corner of Commercial AO2. What are you guys constructing there right now? Is that gonna be another monument entrance sign?
We do not have it current.
The other side, so AO2.
Okay, yes, we do. That's a, that's our entry monument for Valencia, and what we're going for, our vision is a modern fruit stand. And so there will be planters, what's left to go right now, we just dropped the sign in today, are planters that we will, you know, will have lots of color, and it'll be sort of like a trailhead, if you will.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we appreciate that update. Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, counsel, we will now move to our regular agenda. We did cover agenda item number one in the workshop. Were there any, do we have a representative here from Sprint? Okay. Sir, if you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself, we had a robust discussion during our workshop about this. There might be some questions and comments from counsel, but we appreciate you guys bidding on this project and look forward to the potential to work with you all, so.
Yes, sir. My name is Matt Strickland. I'm the Vice President of Sprint Sand and Clay. You may have looked through the bid for some of the information we provided, but we own and operate around 30 sand pits around the greater Houston area, delivering fill dirt and bank sand products, residential, commercial, some highway work. We also perform civil mass grading construction projects, mostly detention ponds like Acre Lake. So a lot of those are done through the bid process versus something like this, which is kind of a reverse bid. But yeah, we've been in business for 40 years and appreciate the opportunity to bid on this project and happy to answer any questions you have.
Awesome. Thank you, Matt. Well, we're very excited. I think one item that we talked about was, once you guys have, everything's negotiated, we're about to get everything sealed, a big concern that we have is gonna be the impact to the surrounding roads, specifically Jordan and 1128. We've seen how other projects in the area, the impact that's made. So understanding the traffic patterns, you're, you know, how many trucks are you guys projecting to come in and out every single day of the site?
I would say on a slow day, we're looking at 50 loads. On a busy day, it could be 400.
Okay. Because that's a, I mean, and that would be anybody that comes and digs, you're gonna have, you're gonna have significant volume that's there. So we'll want, you know, we've kind of expressed to staff, we want to make sure that we pay careful attention to that, the impact to the neighbors, the impact to traffic, and that was one point that was expressed by counsel. But counsel, do you guys have any comments or questions for Mr. Matt here? Councilman Bonner?
Matt, do you have any experience with 400 trucks a day going into a new job that didn't have any before, and some of the things y'all have done to mitigate that problem?
As far as 400 trucks, or as far as this project being a kind of a greenfield site, we have, we've started up a lot of sand pits. Again, property we own, but same concept, you know, 50 to 100 acre sites. So we are experienced in starting up a site. We understand the importance of that initial infrastructure, you know, good haul roads going into the site, establishing good drainage, different things like that to prepare the site. You know, so when trucks come in and out, things are efficient, safe. The maintenance of the haul roads is important to keep the streets clean.
I guess I'm really, I'm really more looking at, once they get out of the pit or on their way back to the pit, they're gonna go through some school zone areas. They're gonna go through some, right now, heavily congested areas. We're already having problems on 1128 with traffic early in the morning and in the afternoon. I'm a little bit concerned about any traffic that's gonna go down 1128 from there impacting that already existing, let's just call it what it is, a cluster right now.
Right.
So I just, I'm worried about the safety there, because like I say, you are going through an elementary school zone down through 1128, and then the high school right there at Meridiana. So I want to make sure, I read through your safety record, and I think I commend you that you do have that type personnel on your staff. I just think that they're gonna need to step up a little bit and make sure the drivers understand safety just isn't in the pit, it's on the road.
Right.
Because we want to mitigate any potential there that we can.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and so any, you know, school zones, high-traffic areas, you know, all that can be addressed in advance with our drivers as far as morning safety meetings, you know, there's always gonna be new drivers on site, so safety meetings have to be repetitive. At the end of the day, they, they're bound to follow the law just like anyone else. You know, any complaints that are outside, you know, obviously, if someone gets pulled over, you know, and they get a citation or anything, we address those for sure, but if we get complaints through citizens, through anything coming through your office, we're gonna address those in real time and make sure they stop.
Thank you, Councilman Bonner. Councilman Lance?
So clarify for me, if you would, the trucks, I mean, they're not just totally, they're not y'all's trucks, right? I mean, there's, you're gonna have all different sand-moving companies coming in, correct?
Most of the trucks that deliver our products are, they're owner-operator dump trucks. That's a pretty common business model with all sand pits, especially around Houston. So you're correct, a lot of them aren't, I would say 99% of our deliveries are made through contract drivers that we're controlling or we're coordinating that delivery. And then there is some degree of outside trucks that come in to pick up. That's kind of under the purview of that company that's sending the truck, but the majority of the deliveries are coordinated through our company.
Thank you.
Mayor Porton?
So I have very little experience in the business world with companies who have had to subcontract this type of work out. What are you guys doing to mitigate that the subcontractors are highly qualified and/or have a safety record? Because I've seen in the past where, obviously, you're subcontracting it out to another company, they're hiring the CDL drivers, they're leasing their trucks, and there's really not a strong vetting process from what I've seen, and then that can lead to liability issues for us as a city. Can you share with us what you're doing on that side of it?
Yeah, so any driver that wants to sign on to run with our company, we do a MVR check. We check their record. We inspect their truck to make sure it's up to par, up to DOT standards. We do a ride-along with any new hire. So they are vetted on the front end before we allow them to work on our behalf.
How many trucking companies do you guys outsource for a project like this on a daily basis?
It's, I guess, most of our truckers are working for us as a whole, so they may go to different sand pit operations that we have. So it's not necessarily that we have to staff up for this particular project. They're already working for the company.
But they're outsourced, correct?
They are.
They're outsourced. And so my question is, how many of those are you guys outsourcing, or how many drivers a day would a project like this require?
It'll vary based off workload. I would say, on average, we would probably have 15 trucks there on a daily basis. A lot of that is for the residential work, Meridiana, the subdivisions. And so the commercial flow, the commercial work kind of ebbs and flows where we might end up with 30 to 40 trucks at the site on a busy day.
Okay. But the companies that you are outsourcing to, is it one individual company, or do you have multiples?
It's multiple.
And then do they have staff, or are they then, and then subcontracting that out to individual drivers that have trucks?
The majority of the drivers are true owner-operators. They own and operate the truck.
Their own trucks.
I would say, you know, probably 70% is owner-operators, and then we have, the remaining would be owners that purchase a truck, they go out and seek a driver. We typically put a limit of about three trucks that we would allow someone to own and not operate.
Not operate.
Not operate, if that makes sense.
And we're vetting the actual drivers, correct? That they are licensed legally driving?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So my concern also with that is that who's taking on the liability, and in our contract that we're about to give our city manager, you know, power to execute on, if something were to happen, something catastrophic, which hopefully it doesn't, but, you know, you do have to mitigate that or at least prepare for it, being that it's a school zone, it's Highway 6, there's heavy residential. Obviously, we want this to work, but those are things that we have to think about. So if something catastrophic were to happen, are you releasing liability to that owner-operator, or are you guys taking liability, or are we on our end?
Well, we require $500,000 of, which is the state minimum, I believe, but, you know, $500,000 worth of insurance on their part.
Commercial insurance for their vehicle.
Correct. And then we have our own auto liability policy that would sit on top of that, so, you know, knock on wood, in the event of a bad accident, you know, if their $500,000 policy is tendered, chances are they're coming after ours. You know, as far as how the liability is handled protecting you guys, I don't know if that's, you know, in the contract, but I'm sure we're signing indemnifications that we're gonna provide representation and indemnify you guys for that.
Okay. The other question that I have is pertaining to how these subcontractors are paid. Are they paid per load, how fast they get it out, or is it a daily job that you guys put out and say, we've got 100 loads that need to be done today? Because what I've also experienced is that some of these subcontracting drivers are speeding down the road because they get more money from dropping off the load and hurrying back, excuse me, hurrying back, and so that incentivizes not the safest behavior when they're driving down little roads and stuff like that.
Right.
What can you say to that?
Yeah, they are paid by the load, so we understand that concern, I guess. At the end of the day, we're competing in an industry that kind of all beats to the same drum, if you will. So they are paid by the load. I understand your concern, but that's where we monitor, you know, promote safety to the best of our ability. We're gonna mitigate that as much as we can. We do run cycle times that are based off kind of what a route should be that we look at. At the end of the day, if we see red flags, we address those. So, yeah, it's paid by the load.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate you.
Yep.
Councilman Oplager, do you have some questions here?
Just a couple of questions. See, as you guys get ramped up and moving, so you're familiar with the pork chop on Highway 6 and Meridiana Parkway?
He's about to be. He's about to be.
You're fitting to learn. All right, so as you guys negotiate and talk through this, you need to take a hard look at that and make sure there's, because that's gonna be a very hard turn for some of these trucks turning right off of Highway 6, just so kind of throw that out there. The hours of operation, right? So there's some big homes right over there, a lot of new homes gonna be right there. What are your hours gonna be?
Our guys typically clock in at 6:45 in the morning. A normal, a full day, we are working till 5 o'clock. I would say from a trucking standpoint, there's not a lot of truck activity after 4:30, but we would still have guys on site till 5:30 or so.
I guess, you know, the noise from the excavation and stuff, the heavy equipment inside the pit, right? So the homeowner's not gonna get woke up at 5:30 or 6:00 in the morning from the equipment firing up, are they?
No, our start time would be 6:45. So really, by, it would probably take them at least 15 minutes to check on things, so I would say 7 o'clock.
Firing up at the crack of dawn.
Right.
So, and then do you work on Saturday and Sunday?
Saturdays is based off customer demand. Sundays are very rare. Not sure if there's any city restrictions on that.
Our chief.
There are the occasional Sundays if we, if we've gone through extensive rainy periods or something like that, sometimes we work Sundays, but it's rare.
And then, so you're gonna have like a street sweeper sweeping the dirt back up off the street?
A street sweeper, water truck if necessary. We do, we will subcontract a, more of like a vacuum-type truck if necessary, but mostly it's the orange street sweeper you see on most construction projects.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Well, I think, Matt, for that, and then Councilman Bonner, we'll go to you. I think that as we discuss the contract, get things in place, there will be some coordination with our police chief and with you guys regarding our heavy equipment hours of operation. We do have some city code around that, and we'll be able to partner with you guys on that and collaborate there. Okay. Councilman Bonner?
On the pug mill, how do you mitigate the dust?
Yeah, and on the pug mill, we've put that as a, I guess, an option. Yeah. And so the pug mill operation would be, would be a second party. You know, you're familiar with probably Cherry or Arcosa, Heidelberg Materials. There's a few operators in Houston. So the dust around the plant from any vehicle traffic would be water truck, just like we're gonna use, and I'm not a pug mill expert, but I know they have.
But they would be in charge of their permits?
They do permits, and they have what's called a baghouse that draws a vacuum off the cement mixing, the actual pug mill part.
Which creates the dust.
So that would filter any cement dust out before it exits the equipment.
I'm just, that'll need to be really thought about, because we already get complaints due to an existing operation that's near a neighborhood. So I can imagine that if that pug mill does become operational, we need to think about doing a really good job on that part of it.
Right. Yes, sir. And I know TCQ has certain setbacks off property lines or off the nearest off-site structure. Try to mitigate that as much as possible, but that doesn't solve everything, so.
Well, Matt, as you can tell, this is, for all of us up here on council, this is the first time that we've awarded a contract like this, so we're asking you a lot of questions for our own knowledge as we learn, and I appreciate you taking time and educating us tonight. Dan in chief, as I've been listening and thinking specifically about the traffic, seems like the most optimal route will end up being off of Highway 6, Meridiana Parkway to Jordan, because you will pass by the least amount of residential homes. We will need to probably expedite things with text regarding the pork chop, but then I'm also thinking if we're gonna have potentially 400 trucks a day on that Jordan intersection, we're gonna have to make that a four-way stop, because last we want is a truck trying to slowly get up to speed and turn with oncoming, with oncoming traffic. So that's just something for us to, something for us to look at there. We'll see how it shakes out, though, so. Matt, is there any other information that you'd like to share with us tonight? Anything else that would be good for us to know?
I think during the pre-bid meeting, there was a question mark on if that entrance, the road on the north side, is that most likely gonna be the permanent entrance?
And what I told counsel before is, we obviously need to sit down and lay out a traffic control plan, and, you know, if you have one entrance for, you know, office-type personnel or site trailer or something like that, that's one thing, and then if the trucks need to come in and out over here, so we haven't gotten into the details yet, but that'll be the next step.
All right, well, I'll be on standby if there's any further questions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Matt. I appreciate all the information tonight.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any other comments or questions? All right, well, Dan, appreciate all your work on this, Wale, Robbie, the entire team. This has been a long time coming. I know former Councilman Larry Akry is gonna be very excited about this, so appreciate y'all's work there. Counsel, do I have a motion for this agenda item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Bonner. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Councilman Hudson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Matt, congratulations. Oh, he's like, all right, I'm gone. I'm ready to go home. He's like, I'm tired. All right, counsel, we'll move on to agenda item number two. This is consideration and possible action to approve design-related input and recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Board regarding City Hall Park. It was recommended by Parks Board and Recreation on 4/24/2025. We do have Jeff with P Gal here. Jeff, if you can kind of give us the high-level overview, I know a lot of us watched the Parks and Board meeting, and then we'll open it up to comments and discussion.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and counsel. Yes, so I-
Uh, yes, so I, uh, am prepared today to share with you the feedback that we got from the Parks Board, and, uh, we are, just from a big-picture perspective, we are finalizing, we're in the final steps of finalizing design for bid documents. Uh, and a lot of the park elements that we, uh, shared with the Parks Board are outside of our original budget allocation. Um, and so we are, uh, approaching it as a ad alternate approach so that, um, those bids for various park elements would be isolated so that the city could choose to do none of them at this time, or maybe choose to do one if, if the budget does allow. Um, and a number of these park elements are kinds of products that the city can buy directly off of the state purchase contracts, so that you would be able to do that, uh, a lot of these by yourself, uh, in the future. But we're, we're designing all the infrastructure into the, um, project itself, so, um, so the first slide here, this is the overall master plan for the park. Uh, you see large street, uh, at the bottom of the page, um, we have, we have a, a gazebo that's over on the west side with the, with the circular area walk around it. Uh, in the sort of center-left of the site is a covered pavilion, open pavilion that has two open green areas on either side that would be pre-situated with tent, um, foundations to be able to, vendors to be able to come in and set up tent structures already in place. Just to the south of the page of that is the, is the primary off, um, large street parking area for that zone. Uh, we are planning for that to be a, a food truck, um, zone that will have utilities piped into those two islands that food trucks could, uh, tap into, uh, when you, when you have, uh, city events. Right to the east of that is a restroom building, uh, that will be for public use. It will also have a storage room, which I'll show you in a minute, have a storage room associated with to be able to, um, hold some of the city park components that we use for this area. Uh, right adjacent to that is a playground multi, um, uh, age group, uh, playground zone, which I'll go into in more detail. Uh, right to the right of that is the formal detention pond for the overall development, um, but it is being designed to be used as a dog park, uh, and will, will be able to be set up as a dog park with a fenced-in zone, uh, for, for citizens to be able to use when it, when it is dry. Again, this is the overall full master plan design of that park, um, and I'm gonna go through, uh, pieces of it here. So we did, uh, we presented this master plan a couple different times to the Parks Board. Uh, we did get some feedback, and I'll show you, I'll talk about the comments first, and then I'll show you the exhibits that they saw. First was the gazebo. Uh, we presented some, uh, wood, uh, components and also some metal components. There was a lot of discussion about the longevity of those elements and the interest in having a longer, less maintenance-dependent approach to that type of structure, as well as the other ones. Um, they also, uh, were looking to have a themed, uh, approach to all these elements so that they would have a common theme. Um, one of the interests were to be have a, an early Manville, uh, theming to as many of the elements as possible, uh, with the, maybe the introduction of some railroad-type motifs for some of the play structures that would again feed into the, um, history, early history of Manville, um, per se. Uh, we did show them a number of different designs for the gazebo, um, and they want, they were, some of them they thought were too coastal-looking, and they wanted it to be more tied back to the railroad, early Manville theme. In terms of the playground, uh, there was a lot of discussion. You can customize a lot of the play structures. Uh, there was a lot of interest in trying to come up with one that had a, the railroad theming, um, that would play into that. They, they're very interested in having swing sets. There's a lot of interest that the community would, uh, like to have, uh, swinging, uh, playground equipment. Obviously, all of these need to be, uh, fully accessible, um, structures. There was a preference, uh, to not have some spring riders, but potentially have some spinning, uh, options. Uh, they, there was an interest in having some climbers, um, and I'll show you some, some examples of that. And to make sure that all of these elements are accessible so that all children of any physical capability would be able to interact with all of these different, um, elements. And then finally, related to the pavilion, again, we showed a lot of different approaches to that, and the interest was there to be, uh, more in the metal, uh, pre-finished approach to that, so it had less maintenance and more longevity. Um, and again, to have a railroad depot-type strategy for the overall design approach to that. So the first thing I'm gonna show you is the pavilion. This was one of the examples. We showed a number of different ones. While this one doesn't necessarily tie back to a railroad theme, just the articulation of the, of the intersecting gable roofs, um, and maybe some different detailing of that would provide more of a railroad-type approach. Uh, but this, that was the, some of the other were more simple, um, shaped roof structures that didn't have the kind of character that maybe this one that could, potentially could have a, a railroad, um, motif to it, or a depot motif. In terms of the gazebo, we showed a number of different gazebos approaches. This is the one that most closely aligned with some, uh, adjustments that this is a metal, uh, gazebo. Um, again, we talked about the roof materials, that metal would also be a, a better approach to having on the, on the, on the roof elements, again, tying that architecture back to the gazebo, per se. The restroom building, again, those are these, this will be a prefabricated restroom structure that would not only have, um, men's and women's, uh, restroom, drinking fountains, but you see in the back, there would be a storage, uh, facility, a storage room that would be able to be used by the city to help store tables or chairs that might be used in events or other, other, um, components. But again, the architecture of these, uh, prefab buildings are customizable so that color, materiality, um, could be tied back to the other, um, structures. Then the playground itself, while this imagery doesn't have, um, the right, we're still tracking down, working with manufacturers to create the right imagery of the railroad elements, uh, or the train elements, um, but it would be a, a, one of the playground elements would be something like this, so it would have different elements that would hearken back to shapes and colors, um, of, of having a, a railroad or train-type approach. Um, you see in some of these, up in the upper right, uh, more of a, um, a geometric climber, which was, there's a lot of interest in having a climber, um, as well as the swing set, which I mentioned previously. And then finally, related to the dog park, so there will be a number of elements that will be, um, positioned around into the dog park that would be tailored to different types and sizes of dogs, um, to be able to enjoy, um, that area, and again, would all be fenced in, um, in its surrounding. So, the money page. Um, so as I mentioned, uh, on the original, uh, we call it West Wing Expansion and the parking lot, there was a budget, um, for that overall project, which did not include a park, uh, was at $5.3 million. Um, as we looked at these different park improvements, there was a reduction in the num, amount of parking in the original budget, which would provide some money in our original budget for some portion of the park improvements, but it was only like $115,000 of reduced parking to be reallocated to park elements. Um, and you can see, based upon the, the quality and sizing of some of those park elements, um, you can see that the dog park elements was, you know, budget for that is around $130,000. The restroom building, around $400,000. The gazebo, around $125,000. The pavilion of the sides, we're talking about 250. Uh, the playground equipment of those various elements, um, that you saw, about $425,000. And then all of the other pieces, the ground surfacing, the lights, all of the other components that sort of set up all of those park elements to be able to set into them, uh, there's a budget for that for about $750,000. So all of those park elements in aggregate are about a little over $2 million. And when you plug in, if those are assigned to a general contractor, they're gonna market them up, um, and, and applying contingencies to that, the delta, if I plug that into that West Wing budget is an increase over my original $5.3 million allocation of about 2 point, just under 2.7 million. And again, the approach is that we are going to have ad alternates for each of those elements so that they will be designed, they will be bid, um, they will show up as an individual number that the city can choose not to include at this time, or to include at this time, um, individually if you choose to do so, depending on how the bids come in for the balance of the project. I'm sure we'll come back to that page. Um, and just in terms of overall schedule, as I mentioned, this is the original schedule that I presented back when we started the project. We are on track for this. We are in the permitting process now. We are finalizing and getting ready to go out on the street, um, to bid the project with construction period, um, uh, with the original anticipation of it being in April of '26, with the completion of the West Wing and, and the parking lot components. Again, this is before we started talking about the park. As we got into the design of the project, we started de-factoring all of the other, um, activities around the site, including, uh, construction and impact of construction and removal of your parking lot for this project, and how does the city continue to operate court and all others, uh, safely, other city functionality on the site. So we looked at really kind of two different approaches to that. One is that we just extend the construction period and have the contractor go and build a portion of the parking lot first, before they, um, shut down your primary parking lot to build the building, um, which obviously then extends that construction period out. Or another idea that we're trying to put our arms around is to go out to a job-order contractor that the city has used before to do a portion of that, um, preliminary parking lot, which we can put into place and contract quickly, um, and get that part done by a job-order contractor, and then stage the bidding for the rest of the work, um, to align when that, that, they would start, right, when the, that parking lot is finished. And so, um, it's my opinion, I think that'll be better served from an overall construction cost to the city because you're not paying the full contractor extended general conditions for that period where they're building the parking lot. You're, you're getting that at a lower price point, most likely based on the job-order contractor. Um, and then they, but it's, but the bottom line is whether you re-included with the general contractor or the, um, the job order adds about four months to the overall completion of the project in order to be able to accommodate the parking needs to keep this building operational during construction. So, under that scenario, uh, that would have the overall project being finished in August of '26 as opposed to April.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Jeff. That's a lot of information there. There's some information in your packet that's not in ours, so I would love to, if you can distribute that.
Yes.
That way we have time to, to process through that. And what we're looking for tonight, council, is just, do we like the design recommendations? We're still gonna have to figure out the pricing, where the money comes from, how do we phase it in, but do we like the design recommendations? Uh, Jeff, I'll start us off with a few questions, and then we'll open it up to council. Um, those are some pretty expensive restrooms, you know, that's the cost of a new home, um, to somewhere just to do your business. Now, as, you know, a father to, I guess, middle-aged kids now, which is kind of weird for me to say, I don't like that. Um, but, you know, when my kids used to be young and I would have to take them to change them, I wanted to be somewhere that's safe and clean. I'd be interested to see, you know, if we can bring down that cost, because that's kind of high. Um, I love the design. I love the recommendations. I, I think the Parks Board and you, Jeff, have done a great, great job with this. Uh, the playground definitely needs to be inclusive. That is a key focal point. Councilman Oplager has brought that up. I've brought that up. So those design elements, I saw one there of, of a slide that you can go up on a wheelchair. Things like that are, are huge, um, to me. Uh, I think there's an opportunity, Tammy, to, to reach out to Reagan Velasquez with the Yellow Out Campaign and get her thoughts on some of it. She is a, a young lady in Manville that started out the Yellow Out Campaign for Spina Bifida, and her big thing is inclusive, inclusive parks. One thing I've heard from the community as they've seen this design now, uh, one, I love that great spot for the Manville market in the future. I think there's tons of opportunity that's there, but possibly about the inclusion of a splash pad. That's, that's the one thing that I've heard. I'm not sure what sort of cost estimates there would be for something like that, what the impact would be if we took out one of those, um, multi-use open lawn spots and instead on that, on that east side, put a splash pad there. But that's, that's something that I, I've heard from a lot of parents that they would love to see, and that not really any neighborhoods even, even offer that. Now, I don't know how much a splash pad costs. It might be a million dollars.
It varies. You can get them little, and you can get them, you know, Disney World size, right? So, it's just.
Don't mention Disney World. That's gonna get our mayor pro tem excited there, so careful. But I, if, if we could see some of those, some of those on, what do you, what do you see?
I mean, I, I think we've done splash pads. I mean, it's been a, I mean, if Michael's here, he does them all the time, my landscape architect. Um, the last one I know that I did was, um, in, uh, the West U, um, Colonial Park, and if I remember right, it was probably $50,000 for the one that was about, you know, 15-foot in diameter-ish with a number of, of, um, jets that went with that. Um, it's really the pump system is really the main, primary cost of, of that system and having it circulating, so you don't have water that's not clean and, and all of that. But obviously, there's, there's a wide, uh, price point for, depending on what, what you wanna get. Again, that was a few years ago, so I would need Michael to give me better guidance on that.
The question for that would also be, the question that I would have on that is, I've seen and frequented splash pads for many years, is the maintenance of it, having somebody to maintain it, and to my understanding, it's chlorinated water, just like a pool system. And so one of the things that we do have to be aware of is just the cost of building it, but also keeping it functional, maintaining, and not just say, hey, we put this in and it's always broken, or it's not. If, if we're gonna do it, it needs to be done right. And also to your point about, about the restrooms, as a mama bear, I've, we play softball, and we're at different parks every weekend doing tournaments, and it icks me because the last thing that usually gets focused on is the restrooms. And Buc-Ee's didn't become Buc-Ee's because they had terrible thrones. So that's something that if we're going to have restrooms, then I think that it's easy to say, what can we do for the least cost without compromising cleanliness and quality? That's, that's all I ask, but I'm sure we can do that.
I would, I'd make a couple of points. Is it, I completely agree with what you just said. Um, and the reason, I mean, obviously, the prefabricated restroom is less expensive than building a custom restroom. We, I just did one for the City of Webster, maybe one more stall, and each one of these was like $750,000. That was not a prefabricated one because they didn't want that approach to the Texas Park. But the, the advice is, is that for the price point and for the, because it's all pre-manufactured, that it will, it will be easier to maintain it, they're just, it's more, um, easier to clean, uh, because it's all prefabricated and, and built together to, to piece together. It's, it's a lot of money, but I'm saying we did this because a custom one would have been more than that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
You answered, you answered one of my questions, two of my questions during the presentation. One was, what was the, what was the estimated cost? So you said we have about 5.3 million remaining for the City Hall expansion and for this park. How much are we projecting for the City Hall expansion?
Um, if I go back to that page.
And council, the reason I ask this is later in the agenda, we're gonna have the, the possible allocation of money for a parking lot at Croy Park, and I think having this information to make a decision, you know, we have more than just a thousand dollars in, in the Parks budget. We have a lot of money that we're trying to decide what we wanna do with, and so determining where do we wanna put that money, Croy Park, City Hall Park, kind of having these numbers is gonna be extremely helpful.
So, on the left. So, on the left, I know it's hard to read that, but the two places that I highlighted are the ones I want to point you to. The top highlighted yellow line is the one hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar, that's really the, the money that was in the original budget that could be allocated towards park improvements, short of the detention, which there's another line in here for that piece. And there's, and some of the trees is included in the, assumed to be included in the original budget. I always include in all of the budgets, including the one I did for you, a owner's contingency, which you see at the bottom highlighted line, and that money is, I always recommend that cities put a line item in there, so that if you need it, you have it allocated, you're not going, looking for it from where else, and hopefully, you can put it somewhere else when you don't need it. And I usually plug in just a straight percentage. You can see here, there's six-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, which is the percentage of the totals above that, that's in that category. If we get good bids, and we live within the bid day, then that money, a portion of that money could be allocated towards some of this park improvement if you choose to. Probably wouldn't want to do that on day one, right, because you'd want to make sure that there's no, we don't find anything buried under the site, or something that you would want to use that contingency money for, under normal circumstances. But because of the nature of this project, and because those elements are, a lot of those are pre-fabricated, they could be purchased later on in the construction, just like you would furniture, and be able to use money, whether it be from this budget or a different budget. I know, Dan, do you want to talk about the timing of the bid receipt?
Well, and I appreciate that, Jeff, that, that's helpful, knowing what's, what's there. I do think it's wise to always have a contingency, just in, just in case, so that way you're not calling Rosie up and all frantic, where do we need to, to get this money from if an emergency happens? So that's, that's very wise stewardship, which I appreciate that. Dan, did you want to talk about the...
Yeah, I think what he was referring to, so if, if we hold to this timeline, then we'll be right around that October timeframe, so these park elements, you know, this is good to have all these numbers now, so that we can be budgeting for them for next fiscal year.
Because as I, as I look at it, so potentially, best-case scenario, within the five-point-three million, we have roughly seven-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Then we have potentially the money that we sold the two acres for, about eight-hundred thousand, and depending on what we want to do with Croy Park, that's potentially five-hundred thousand. So there's still some money that we'd have to come up with, depending on how we want to do this, or do we want to do a phased approach? Has the Parks Board discussed if there's own, like, which items are their priorities? Like, one, two, three, four?
There, there was, there was discussion on some of the priorities, I mean, there was, there was some minor discrepancies, but I think that, I think the restroom was a, a high priority of, of the group. The playground equipment was a high priority of the group, and then the pavilion was next, a gazebo, I think, if I remember right, and Dog Park was the least of the priorities of the group.
If we go to phased approach, the thought was, if I can...
Hey, Councilman.
Parks Board, kind of...
You're good.
The Parks Board kind of came up with that idea, too. If we had to go to phased, and I think you have a picture of what they thought maybe the first phase might be.
I didn't include that in, well, I actually, I do, I'd have to, let me, you're going to click...
At least, we have it in our packet. There's a picture there that only shows the restroom, basically, right there. And that was our thought, is this was the bare minimum, the Park Board thought we needed to start with at bare minimum, and then, once we figured out the funding, we could look at what, what of the other adders that we could do. But that gave you the park and the restroom, so that you could at least start somewhere. So that, that was what the Park Board recommended.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, Jeff, I've hogged enough time. Counsel, comments, questions right now for, for Jeff or for staff? No? All right, hearing none. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dan, what you guys are looking for tonight is to approve the recommendation, and then from there, the next step would be finalizing numbers, and we should expect, when should we expect to have something come before us to make final decisions?
Right now, for the parks, based upon, that's the second schedule I showed you, they'd be sometime in, in October.
So, so the next thing that we would do, Mayor, was we would go out for bid. Now that we've got the, the whole packet, we've got everything, once we get our plans, and they've been submitted to the Drainage District, submitted to the city, so we go out for bid, we entertain bidders and go through that process, and then we'd be bringing back that, those, you know, however many different bids we get, after we vetted them and bring back to, to you, to, you know, if, if the entire thing can be done within the budget that we have, then great, that makes it easy. If not, then that's whenever we have to make the, the recommendations.
So we need to, next step will be, next milestone will be getting the bids back and analyzing the bids and seeing what can fit. Okay.
So when you said, sorry, when you said October, what, what did you say you were, what was preliminary in October, the start date of the project?
So, so what we would, what we're showing on this slide is that if we do the phased construction with the job-order contractor, which I think is the preferred approach, that we would, we would bid the park and the building and everything else, and we would have bids in early October, with construction starting in November, early November.
In November, with the completion date of, sorry, we can't see the screen.
August, August of twenty-sixth.
Okay, August of twenty-sixth, okay. Thank you.
Wait, oh, completion, okay. Is there any way to get those bids prior to us having to adopt the budget? Because if we're talking, Councilman Bonner, to your point about making budget allocations, October is too late.
We, we can move the, I don't want to move the bids too far in front of construction starting with, you know, pricing, holding pricing conditions, but I think we can, we can give you a little bit of time, we'll, we'll work with Dan to figure out what the sweet spot is, and we'll figure out how to make that happen.
That's awesome. Thanks, guys. Councilman Perry, can I get a motion on this agenda item?
Yes, you can.
All right, we, motion to approve? All right, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Barry. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from our mayor pro tem, Sarmenta. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven-two-zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll now move on to agenda item number three. Consideration and possible action to approve recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board regarding the proposed Dolores Martin Park facilities plan, recommended by Parks and Recreation Board, forwarded on four-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Dan, I believe that we'll be turning this item over to you to introduce, and then Councilman Bonner, I'd love you to kind of kick it off to share your perspective, as you've been a big advocate for this item, so, Dan?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So, this was an idea that, looking back through emails and whatnot, it first surfaced, I guess, back in twenty-twenty-one, the idea of, of, you know, the county participating in some form or fashion with the city, you know, so they, they told us the other day that, at the Parks Board meeting, so there aren't virtually, there are only two county parks in the northern part of Bezoria County, and those are both in Alvin, so there's no county park whatsoever in Manville, we know that, none in Pearland. So, the, the idea was, you know, is there an opportunity, is, is there land, is, is there a spot picked out where they could come in and partner with the city? So, in twenty-twenty-one, we looked at Croy Park, we looked at Dolores Martin, which was very much in its infant stages there, and, you know, just what would work the best? So it basically just died on the vine at, at that particular time, and then the idea kind of got resurrected, and that's, I think, where Keith can talk a little bit about bringing this idea back up. So it's, it's still an, an idea, it still has to be approved, of course, by city council, still has to be approved by Commissioner's Court, but there, there's a project that can actually happen there, you know, just to, to cut to the chase, where it's, it's, it's a, it's a park that was identified in the Master Parks Plan, which is great, we didn't know it was going to be called Dolores Martin Park at that particular time, but it's sort of a, it's tied into Almost Heaven Park, the one that's in Sedona Lake. So, when it's all said and done, the updated numbers look like somewhere around a six-million-dollar park for trails and all, all the different components. And if, if the county and the city decided to partner together, then that would be just what, what they're thinking right now. It could be maybe two million dollars of that six comes from grants that the, that the county would help out with. The commissioner's going to see if, if they can commit to two million from the county, and then the other two million would, would come from the city. So that's, again, it's still very conceptual, but it's, it's getting legs, and so it's now, it's definitely time we brought it to the Parks Board last Thursday, I guess, and they, they were in general in, in favor of the idea, but, you know, we, we haven't had an opportunity to talk about it at the council level yet, so, Keith, do you want to fill in whatever I've missed there?
Yeah, Parks is kind of my thing. I grew up going to them all over the area, so I was really interested, once I got on council, I was, I really wasn't thinking about them when I ran into Commissioner Cade at, at another function, and we started talking about parks, and he brought up the fact that he really wanted a park in this area. He, he had some interest, started talking about where we might could put it. I asked around a few questions, and Dolores Martin Park came up, and he actually went out and looked at it and thought, you know, this would be great, let's, let's dig a little deeper. He, he didn't want to bring it up everything right then, because he still has to have a plan to go to Commissioner's Court and discuss with it. So, if we weren't going to be interested as a total group and didn't have enough pre-looking at it, it, it wasn't going to matter if he went to the Commissioner's Court at that time. So that's why it's taken us a little while to just think it through. Brian has been really helpful, the county parks, this is director?
Director.
Yeah, and he's actually visited the, the park, he's fished in the park, we started getting a lot of help from, which Drainage District Four? For filling in the sides, and we've gone from having about fifteen feet of side space to now over a hundred feet all the way down the west side, and they're sloping the banks, the, the water's about fifty feet deep there, and it's actually drinking-quality water, pretty much, which is another important thing for surface water. The whole idea, and talking to, to different people, and, and talking to now the Parks Board this past week, when, when, when they met, was that this would be a, a park for mainly walking, no camping, looking like, but someplace you could go and have picnics, you can walk, I think it had the drawings, it's over almost a mile and a half of walking trail. There's some possibilities of connecting the Dolores Martin Park to the Almost Heaven area, which has an existing trail, but it's in very bad condition, it had to be reworked, but, and there's some other issues there of, of the spaces really small in between the two areas, but it is doable. It's a really nice setup to have more of a sanctuary park. It's got some bird flyover, bird flyovers already, so I, I think there's enough interest in the, in the community. Taking a project that was looking like six million dollars and figuring out that we could get it down to two is a pretty good discount there, too. There's also all kinds of details to work out. The county has the expertise in running parks, so that's where the discussion is kind of leaned toward of, you know, the county has no problem keeping the name Dolores Martin Park, which we were adamant about, we wanted that. Looking at developing a, a contract between us and them to where they basically run the park, we'd have to figure out, you know, you have to have somebody in charge, and if they're going to run it, they're going to want to kind of be in charge, but understanding that we have input to the process, and at some point, want to take over that process. Five, ten years from now, we hope to have a Parks Board that now we can, it's going to take, what'd they say, three to four people on staff, I think, to run it, equipment, all kinds of stuff out there. But I think the, the start jump-off place right now is really good, and it's a good plan, and I'd, I'd like to see the council approve this to let Ryan go ahead and go back to the county commissioners and start working on his end of it.
Well, thank you, Councilman Bonner, for that overview. Question to kick us off, Dan, tonight, similar to item number two, is there, you're just looking for us to approve the recommendation, take the next step in the, in the process, because it was, you know, there's quorum rules, only so many people can talk, now it's we have to bring it in front of everyone, follow the process, get it moved forward. Is there any cost to us right now, or is it just we want to explore this further, still a lot of detail, still a lot of hurdles, but council's on board?
Yeah, that, that's really what, like, I called you Keith a minute ago, I'm sorry about that, Councilman Bonner was, was alluding to. So, before the county commissioner carries us to the rest of his board, I wanted to make sure that, that there was genuine interest from City of Manville, obviously. So, right now, there's not, not a dollar commitment yet, I, I would suspect some sort of an interlocal agreement with, with them before we jump off and start spending money on finalizing design plans and all those kind of good things.
Appreciate that, thank you, Dan. Any comments or questions from council, Councilman Oplager?
Yeah, anybody that's been around me for the last few weeks now, I've been kind of testy about this, because I don't like it at all, right? There's no plan. There's never been a plan presented to any of us so far. It speaks volumes to me that there's nobody here from the Bezoria County Park system to talk about this, right? I had my questions for them, so, you know, so, so I'll just start with manager Dan, right? So in the world of transparency, when did you get the first call on this? When, who called you, when?
Like I said, the earliest email I could find was twenty-twenty-one, so it's, it's been a few years, and I, I don't, I wasn't in that role in twenty-twenty-one, in this role in twenty-twenty-one, so I don't know exactly why the project...
So, so they, so they, so in twenty-one, so the, so the Councilman Bonner brought it back to your attention?
Uh, Councilman Bonner brought it back, I don't know, but, yeah.
Sounds about right.
Yes, sir, sounds about right.
All right, so, so, so since the August fifteenth meeting, there have been seventeen council meetings, seventeen workshops, seventeen manager updates, fourteen executive sessions, not a mention, not one mention of this to anybody. And if you had a, a meeting with other council members at some point, that decision had to be made, when, so you're bringing it to council now, where we, where we have just this meeting to, to, to talk about it, a meeting with action. And I think that's grossly unfair to all of us people sitting here that have no knowledge of this project at all. Very unfair, right? And there's nobody, so, so one of the things you hear, Commissioner Cade wants to be involved with, with, with us, you know, and you look at things, and it kind of drove me driving around on his webpage, and right here, you know, Commissioner Page's update, Road Bridge crews through the inter, interlocal agreement between Bezoria County, City of Danbury, and Drainage District Eight have begun the ditch work for, for the city phase three of the Danbury's Drainage Plan. Then you look at our drainage plan, and ninety-seven percent of our, our community is covered by some sort of drainage district, three percent is not, and that's no man's land. This would have been the perfect time for the county to get involved and help us with something like that, versus, versus a, a park project that I've never heard of anybody talk about in the two years that I've been sitting here. None. I think, again, it's grossly unfair, because us council members have no knowledge of this. You know, it's just, it's just absolutely crazy to me that, that you're wanting us to do this. And so, and then who did they call? You know, the county just bought, the drainage just bought a sand pit right down the street, could have talked to them, right? Who else did they talk to? What does it have to be in Manville? Who knows? Who knows, you know? So, this, you know, it, it really reminds me, when I was a kid, and I wasn't feeling good, I go, Mom, I don't feel so good. She'd take a great big dab of Vicks, rub it all over my chest, and jam some up my nose and tell me I'll feel better tomorrow. You know, this is not, that, it just doesn't set well, you know, getting a bunch of Vicks jammed up my nose, right? So I, I don't understand why, you know, if they call you, what can we... So I don't understand why, you know, if they call you, what can we do for here? You know, why didn't we talk about drainage? That never came up.
When I talked to Ryan, it was about a park he was looking for. He wasn't talking about drainage.
So we.
And the reason that he didn't want to bring it straight to council was that would have had to been done in a public meeting.
That's right.
And as soon as that happened, now instead of Mamvel possibly getting a park, all the surrounding communities that don't have one would have been in the bidding for it.
So the citizen of Mamvel paid $2 million for that land, right? We got money on the line. We got skin in the game. The citizens of Mamvel have already paid $2 million, right? So we got skin in the game already. Nobody, and that park, you know, one of the options is doing nothing. Do nothing at all. That's always an excellent opportunity, you know? And again, a county park is a county park. That's why they're called county parks. It's in the county.
I have a question for you, Councilman Opelager. So how would you have preferred that this unfold? Because.
When this came up to.
No.
Go ahead.
Give me a second. Because from my understanding is we have always wanted to make this park something better. And until Councilman Bonner came on board, there's never been an open door, from my understanding, to be able to partner with the county. So I understand when I hear you say, it's, this is the first I've heard of it. So that kind of makes sense. But also, the pre-development meetings that are done in order to not have a quorum are done to build the plan and then we, once there's a plan, then we have something to talk about. That's my understanding of it. The second is, I understand your frustration, but I would just like to know what specifically is it that gives you heartburn about this? Is it that?
So in September, I guess you guys met in July? July, so that's what, eight, nine months now? That you've had this initial discussion? It was presented to the Parks Board on August 15th.
Which is.
Mentioned in October and then again, just last month, without a mention to council, without a mention.
So, so let me just.
So hold on, hold on, guys. One second, Mayor Protem. So for decorum, we're going to have order about this. So we'll make sure that to speak is to be recognized. I want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. And this is not a battle amongst council, but this is, I want to make sure that we work towards a solution and ultimately we stay on topic here. So you just expressed some items. We'll now give the mayor pro tem.
Thank you.
And then you say your piece and then, Councilman Opelager, if you'd like to be recognized, then we'll go back.
No, I understand. I totally understand what council. I'm just trying to get to a place where I have understanding of what the root and the specific is that you're frustrated about, because I want to understand better. What is it? And secondly, it's my understanding that the board meetings are recorded and posted online. So we're, we could, just like our citizens, we can attend them and I don't always attend PD&amp;Z, but I do watch them and that's the only way that I stay abreast of things. And I will say that as council members, there are certain plans and projects that people get invited to that later on, once there's, I guess, a meat to it, then it warrants a discussion and a workshop so that we all together can make that decision. So that's my understanding of it. I personally don't think any of this was done with a lack of transparency, because if anyone were to ask any of us, I think we're pretty open to answering that. But I'm excited because for the first time, it looks like we will have a partnership, hopefully, so that we can move forward with this phenomenal project that will cost us less money in the end. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman Opelager?
So if you look at Bexory County's webpage, there is no mention of growing the park system at all. Not on the Bexory County Park webpage, not on the county's webpage. There's not, there's not a, say, a vision statement, right? It would have been nice to see what their vision statement is, what their vision of success looks like. I, you know, I worked in the oil company for 35 years, right? Where we're always studying transition sourcing, something, right? There's got to be a better way. And I have no problem looking at a sourcing project like this. But, you know, I would like to see what the vision would look like. We want to build a best-in-class park-type thing, right? There's nothing. I have nothing. Yet we're being asked to approve something to, which, nobody knows what it is, to negotiate something. So that's where my heartburn lies. I'll let it go at that.
Mayor, if I could, so the ask is, do you want to partner with the county or not to help us out with Dolores Martin Park? That's the ask.
Yeah. And I think that's the ask. And, you know, Councilman Opelager, you know, you're saying that this is the first time you're becoming aware of it, but in June of 2024, you sent an email to Manager Dan specifically saying that you were aware that the county, Commissioner Cade was, had their eyes on Dolores Martin Park.
Oh, I've heard about it and I've not been told anything. I've been told, oh, he just called, it's nothing.
So I think that's an opportunity for us. We're always looking for ways to improve. I think the opinion and the perspective was, we don't ever want to bring up a half-baked idea. We want to make sure that we follow the process, that we think things through, similar to the tree ordinance. What is the process? And Councilman Opelager, I know you're always, you're a man of process, which is something I respect greatly about you. And we're always looking for ways to improve and, one, to not bring up a half-baked idea, but at the same time, to make sure that council is aware and engaged. It's the reason why I, as mayor, try to make sure that we form different working committees and working groups and we involve people in different things. So I think, Councilman Opelager, your concerns are heard. We're listening to them and we will find ways to improve for the future, to make sure that once something has legs, we'll see what needs to be done. I also know that Dan is very much an open book. And even though we, as council, have quorum rules that we need to follow, any of us can ask Dan and Dan will be more than happy to share with what conversations are happening, where projects are at. And let's make sure that we take advantage of that with respect to Dan's time, of course. So Dan, your question is, and I'll open it up to council just to see if there's any other comments or questions, and then I want to call the question. But the question is whether or not we are interested in partnering with the county on Dolores Martin Park. And then moving forward, we'll set up milestones in collaboration with all of council in an open meeting to make sure that all of us are up to speed. That's going to be the question. Council, any other comments or questions as it relates to this agenda item? Okay. Mayor Protem?
So it says here, it was presented to the Parks and Boards, the park, what is it? Sorry. Parks and Recreation Board on 4/24/2025. So if that was already on their agenda and it was presented to them, what specifically should we know now as a council, right now, that maybe something was presented there that maybe some of us were not previewed to, that maybe would settle some heartburn or just bring some transparency to the table since we're on that topic? Is there anything that we can bring to, like, that was shared there?
Exactly. What's in the packet?
Okay. So this packet here, which is, it's just, it's an idea and nothing's.
It's a design of what could be possible there, given the space that's there.
Yep.
And it's a raw, really raw amount of cost. Based on conversations that Brian has done, his knowledge of how grants work, my discussions at the Bexory County Days with the Parks and Recreation Board there to find out about grants, just some raw, off-the-cuff estimates that Brian made on things like boat ramp and staff and things like that.
He also mentioned to us, when we had a meeting, just so that everyone's aware, Mayor Dan, myself, and Keith Bonner have had, I believe, two meetings already. I might be wrong, one or two off, with Commissioner Cade and also Brian. And there has been discussions of grant money that's available to build these things and ramps and boating ramps and things that bring utilization to the community without us footing the huge bill, knowing that we have the other parks that we're working through now, just like we discussed right before this. So I think it's huge to just state that, that it's not that any, I don't believe that anybody's trying to be kept in the dark. I think maybe we should have done a better job of sending maybe a recap email without creating a quorum. However, I do think that this is how we do, you know, we should be collaborating and finding ways to maximize what we have. And I feel like we were able to do that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman Bonner?
I don't think we could have done it any differently without violating open meetings and quorum. It just didn't pan that way. And nobody was making decisions. I kind of take that as a slap if somebody thinks I was making decisions when all I was doing was saying, here's a possibility that we can get a park and don't have to pay for the whole thing. And not trying to cover up anything. I won't apologize for trying to get a park from Mamvel. I won't do that. If somebody wants to get on me for trying to do that, more power to them. But I'm not going to apologize for that.
Thank you, councilman. So guys, we'll call the question here. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation from the Parks and Rec Board regarding the proposed Dolores Martin Parks facility plan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from our mayor pro tem. And then we have a second from Councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Motion passes in a 6-2-1 vote. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to agenda item number four. This is consideration and possible action to approve a design modification request to allow a crushed asphalt driveway for new home construction at 7619 Scott Avenue, Mamvel, Texas, and authorize the mayor to execute the associated development agreement forwarded with favorable recommendation from PD&amp;Z on 4/28/2025. We did have a presentation from staff during the workshop. Staff, is there anything that you would like to give us an overview? Before we head into it, I do know the applicant is here, Mr. Oscar. We'll let him come up and say a few words.
Yeah, we extensively covered this item at the workshop, so we don't have any additional information, but the applicant is here who would like to address the council.
Hello, Mr. Oscar. Thank you for being here and wading through some of those agenda items.
Howdy, councilmembers and mayor. I'm here, first of all, I just want to say, my wife and I and our two boys are three-year-old and our two-month-old. We're excited to be part of the City of Mamvel. I mean, we're looking at making parks and stuff like that, so I'm excited about that moving in. Sure, we presented this case last Thursday to the Planning and Soling Committee regarding possibly having a temporary deviance of allowing me to have a temporary driveway out of crushed asphalt instead of a concrete driveway in order for my family and I to move into the City of Mamvel. As of right now, the house is pretty much 99% complete. We just received the certification for TDI approval for Windstorm. Tomorrow, we have the final inspection for building and then I can possibly move in on Friday, if possible, right? If that's the case. Sure, just to give you some background, about in the late January, submitted a design criteria change to allow me to have a potential crush out, crushed asphalt or washout driveway temporarily in order for me to save some money to pour a concrete driveway eventually. This has been going on since January, now we're here in May. I've cooperated, I've collaborated with the city. I was requested by the city to hire a professional engineer to go out to my lot, which is Scott Avenue, and assess the driveway. A professional engineer of the state of Texas went out there and they filled out the form that is required by the city and stated that there's no issues with drainage, there's no issues with the foundations. And overall, it's okay to pour either crushed asphalt as a temporary solution while I pretty much come up with some money to pour a driveway out of concrete, right? Sorry, I'm blank. It's been a long process. Anyways, again, we presented this to the Soling Committee last week and we, they, I think we, like you stated here, we had a favorable decision of to mitigate the dust concern that the city brought up, that to pour concrete from the concrete, from the road towards the property, right, 25 feet, which that allows from the dust not being able to get into the road as a potential fodder or hazard or any concerns. We also, I've proposed different solutions such as, say, crushed asphalt is one of them, right? Another solution is, I know it's a hot mix asphalt. The reason why I don't think that's a favorable solution, temporary solution, is because one thing that, I think I was looking at the workshop and I know Jose mentioned that, I mentioned that the driveway outside the city hall is currently out of hot mix asphalt and there's a lot of cracks, there's a lot of potholes outside, right? And if I want that to be a temporary solution and I pour it right now, within the year, I will have to remove it to pour the concrete. Overall, I am willing and I will pour concrete, right, on my driveway. It's just I don't have the necessary means right now because I'm building the house cash, all cash, hardworking money. My wife and I, we've been together since high school and now we're hopefully becoming residents of the City of Mamvel. So again, this is just a temporary deviance of pouring 25 feet of concrete within the street towards the property line and then eventually with the caveat of pouring concrete the rest of the driveway within the year.
All right. Thank you, Oscar. I also met my wife when I was in high school. We started working together and got married whenever I was 18 and she was 20. So I want to honor you and your wife for being together in high school and staying together. And I'm sure you have two kids, you said three and 11?
Three-year-old and then two-month-old.
And a two-month-old, then two-month-old. Okay, yeah, so you're a busy man.
Yes, sir.
With the young ones. Well, thank you for that presentation. I'm sure council might have a few questions and comments. Anyone from Mayor Protem? We'll start with you.
Thank you so much for coming and pleading your case. My question for you is, knowing how expensive building a home is, and kudos to you for having the discipline to build that cash, that's extremely expensive. What are we talking about when it comes to the cost? Just so that everyone has an idea of the difference of how much just a driveway for your home is going to cost.
Yes, ma'am. So my driveway is about approximately 9,000 square feet, which they're charging me $5.50 per square foot to pour concrete. That comes out to be at $45,000. Initially, I wanted to pour a concrete of about almost 10,000 square feet, pretty much a width of 24 feet wide. But now, obviously, I got to make smarter decisions, so I ended up measuring the street, Scott Street, and it's 18 feet wide. So I ended up reducing that size in order for me to be able to accommodate this one-year ask, right? So me pouring 9,000 square feet of concrete at $5.50, it comes out to $45,000 for the entire driveway. Asphalt.
And you would have to put cash?
Correct. Correct. Asphalt, hot mix asphalt is about $27,000. Again, if I pour hot mix asphalt, I will have to remove it and then pour the concrete. And the reason behind that is because I'm an engineer myself, I work at NASA as a project manager, and those two materials don't bond together, right? Hot mix asphalt concrete do not bond together. So the right way, and I heard you mention earlier, that if we're going to do something right, we're going to do it right, is to pour concrete. I totally agree. I'm 100% on board, right? And I, again, it will be extra expensive if I do hot mix and then have to remove it to pour the concrete.
So what you're saying is, you're willing to spend the extra money, you just need to buy time because you guys are looking, you would love to move in sooner than later. And if this were an option for you to do that, but then come back and do it right when you have the necessary means?
Well, you already talked about $27,000 plus $45,000, right? So that exceeds the $45,000 of just pouring the concrete. Based on the Planning and Soling Committee that I presented last Thursday, they agree of the 25 feet, right, which comes out on both sides. I have a U driveway. That comes out to $5,000, just the concrete alone. So that's 25 feet on one side, 25 feet on the other side. And then on top of that, I'm proposing of pouring, well, not pouring, but putting crushed asphalt, right, temporarily, which is an additional $4,000. So we're talking about $9,000. Once that's, and then within the year, when they're up for the rest of the concrete, I'm adding another additional $40,000. So I'm essentially spending about $4,000 more by doing it, the process of the Planning and Soling Committee, than if we went to go ahead and pour hot mix, which I'll be spending $27,000. $27,000 more.
So what is your ask?
My ask is to pour concrete from the street to the property line, which is 25 feet, right? And then, within a year, I'll pour concrete the rest of the driveway. That's my ask.
How soon, how close are you to completion of your home? And what are the last steps before you guys are able to move in?
The driveway.
That's it?
That's it. I can move in, I mean, tomorrow, if the building inspection passes, which I got certification from TDI, Windstorm approved. If it passes tomorrow, if it wasn't for a driveway, I can move in Wednesday.
And how much did the professional engineer cost you to come out and certify that?
$1,500.
Okay.
And again, I've abided, I follow all the regulations, I follow all the inspections, I've collaborated with the city by all means, and this is where I'm at right now. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
I do want to mention that whenever I was here in the workshop, I did hear a question about my neighbor's surroundings, right, if they have crushed asphalt or if they have concrete. Out of 13 properties on the street of Scott, there's three properties that have accommodation of both crushed asphalt and concrete. There's three houses that have full concrete, and then the rest have just washed out, which I currently have in my property.
And question about that, for the new builds, because, you know, this land was just subdivided and sold about two years ago. So then homes right next to you, are those homes concrete, all concrete?
Two of those houses have mix of crushed asphalt and concrete.
So how did we get those approved there, guys? If that's, I see a shaking no.
I'm shaking no. I mean, they shouldn't have been approved. That's what I'm shaking.
And like I said, I mean, those are some of the circumstances that happened in the past, and we haven't been able to dig in to figure out what exactly happened. We're not 100% sure if it was something that was missed on an inspection, if it was resulting from a permit that was issued before some of the change happened. We'll have to look into that.
So when we say the change, I mean, this was just two years ago. So what changed within the past two years that caused this was missed, that caused this to be missed?
I'm not 100% sure. As I said, we were not able to do a lot of research on that. We do know that some of the adjoining properties do have concrete. We were not able to take a look at, and we do have a meeting upcoming about inspections and issuing permits, and this is one of the items that we'll be discussing to make sure there is prompt and adequate inspection on driveways before.
Because now I'm even, I'm even more torn. I was torn. I was prepared to come in, you know, sir, and I was going to vote no to this. The reason why is because I've seen too many people stand before here and say one thing and do another. And that's not to say that I don't, I don't trust you and I don't think you're an upstanding citizen. I know Ms. Carolyn Bowen speaks very highly of you, and I love Ms. Bowen. At the same time, I always have concerns when somebody says, let me do something now, and then trust me later, even if they have an agreement, we'll do it. I've seen somebody stand before here and ask for a variance request and say, my wife's pregnant, she's eight months pregnant. Just give us this variance request. We want to build our home. We want to move in before the baby comes. So we gave it to them, but they lied to us because they only wanted that so that way they could get a variance for a driveway, for a road, to then sell their home and profit off of their home. They had no plans to live in that. So maybe that's my time in office being a little bit jaded to some of these things, but that's where I struggle with. I also struggle with the fact that you could do it as asphalt. And we currently have an allowance for asphalt within the DCM, where you wouldn't have had to have paid the $1,500. You wouldn't have had to wait all this time to come before here because we understand that for some people, $40,000, $45,000 is expensive. So that's why we allow for the asphalt path. But if we have made the mistake, and I'm saying we as a city, I'm not saying it's just staff, it's just council, it's all of us, if we have made the mistake where some have been approved as crushed asphalt, then I would feel wrong in rejecting yours because some of your neighbors were able to do it because we made, we made a mistake.
I do want to mention that those citizens, they've been there living a year, about a year now, and the last time they modified the design criteria was in March 2024.
Yeah, it's tough because if you don't have rules, if you don't stand for something, then you fall for anything. So we have, we have our rules, we have them for a reason. There's, there's safety reasons for this, but it's tough. So you can see, I just, I'm processing my thoughts out loud, so you can see, I want you to move into your home, but I'm very much torn about this. I hope you see that. Thank you. Councilman Lance?
I'm sure you considered it, but I just kind of would like to hear your reasoning. Why don't you focus just on putting the left part of the drive-in, going back to your garage, and the U-turn, the horseshoe, and the, and the right entrance? Do that next year?
I mean, it's still about 20K, 25, and I really don't have that money right now, right? I will have it within a year or less.
So you've priced that already as doing one side?
It's half of it.
Holding off the other one?
Yes, sir.
And it's still?
It's 25K.
It still beats the price of, I mean, it's still worse than, okay. Well, that surprises me, actually.
It's a pretty big driveway.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions?
And again, I mean, right now, I'm requesting this because, again, I can probably move in within the next week or days, possibly, right? I don't want my house to be sitting there for a year. I pretty much drive there daily from work to Mamvel, back home, just to make sure that there's no vandalism at my house, right? Fortunately, two weeks ago, there was a window open. Couldn't do anything about it, right? But that's, that's my concern as well as safety of just having my house there, and I can't move in because of a driveway and having, passing electrical, plumbing, HVAC, TDI inspections. So, yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions from council? No? Councilman Oplager?
No.
No? All right.
PDNZ approved it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. You can sit down now. We'll cast a vote here.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Appreciate you being here tonight. So, all right, so council, do you want to make a motion? If you guys are ready?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from the mayor pro tem. We have a second from Councilman Hudson.
The motion is with the agreement of?
Mayor Protem, would you be willing or able to clarify?
Yes, being, can we put that in there? Yes, with the agreement as stated here, that they will finish that off within the year based on what he's asking specifically? Yes.
Okay, so we have?
What if, what if it's not finished within a year?
So we have a clarifying question. Bobby, what happens if it's not finished within a year?
Well, it's an agreement, it's contract. The city would have two options at that point, you know, to suit and enforce the agreement, and it calls specific performance, or we, the other remedy is we revoke the certificate of occupancy, meaning nobody could live there. And if somebody, like we talked about earlier during workshop, if somebody inhabits a structure without a certificate of occupancy, we could write a ticket each day as a separate offense.
How much is the ticket free start?
Well, the range could be, it's really usually about $500, but it could be up to $2,000 affects health, safety, welfare. $2,000 per day if the judge.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Councilman, for your clarifying questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes in a six to one votes. Congratulations, Carlos. Looks like next step here, Tammy, Bobby, what would be the next step since this passed? We would need to get a development agreement.
The agreement's drafted. There's no more changes from staff. It could probably be signed this week.
Okay, because I'm just thinking about the timeline for moving in now. I believe once the driveway is poured, though, there would need to be an inspection for that. What's the kind of the process from here, guys? Just so the gentleman knows what the process is for his family.
Well, the development agreement need to be signed, I guess, and Oscar has a list of inspection that needs to be addressed, and we will communicate the fact that crushed asphalt was approved for the driveway temporarily, and that should take care of the inspection on the driveway.
Okay, so he can move forward with more in the driveway, doing what he needs to do. We can then, at the same time, be getting the development agreement signed. So that way, I just don't want the development agreement to be the slowdown for him and his family to move in, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Carolyn, for being here. Agenda item number five. This is consideration and possible action to approve a subdivision variance request for an approximate two-acre tract of land located at 9411 Quaker Court, Rose Share in Texas, 77583, PID 197902, seeking to vary Chapter 62, Section 62108, lots A5, which requires a minimum one-acre lot area residential lots not served by the public sewer system to create two single-family residential lots and authorize the mayor to execute the associated development agreement. Council, we discussed this during the workshop. Any other comments and/or questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion? Oh, oh. Can you unmute yourself, Councilman?
So we talked in the workshop about there's going to be some land laws for an easement. Am I wording that right?
Something to the effect of that. So when they're developing these two lots, they have to dedicate a portion of their property to be accepted as a right-of-way, which currently doesn't exist. There is a road there, but then the way the land was subdivided in way in the past, right-of-way was not created because it was not planted. So as a result, their lots are going to go down from 2.1 acres to, I'm not exactly remembering the number, but there's a slight reduction, which is not very significant, and that's the reason why staff is recommending approval. And currently, those two lots already exist as two separate parcels on the appraisal district's website, but it's under common ownership. And what the applicant is trying to do is have two one-acre rich lot because of that reduction on the right-of-way dedication, and have two single-family homes on the property.
I believe the applicant's here. You guys are good with that?
Yes, and if anyone wants to approve it.
Okay, so we've got a thumbs up there. All right. Councilman Lance, any other questions, sir? No? Okay. Counsel, comments, questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for this agenda item?
Make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion from Councilman Hudson, a second from Councilman Perry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Congratulations. Thanks, y'all, for hanging out.
Of course.
Yeah, you have a good evening. Drive safe. Goodbye, guys. All right, now we're down to three in the crowd. Down to three. No, you, hey, you're more than welcome to. You're more than welcome to, but you don't, you don't have to. All right, agenda item number six. This is consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of ordinance 2025-0-14. Our city manager's out. We just lost Councilman Bonner, so maybe we'll just take a minute there and we'll wait for them to come back. While we do that, you know what, Joes? Give us a high-level overview of this agenda item. What are some, what are some good things for us and for the public to know about it?
So this is a tree preservation component to our development landscaping section of the zoning ordinance. This stems from a lot of interest, both from citizens and our council members who also helped us as a subcommittee in putting this together. What it aims at doing is protecting large, mature trees of certain species and prohibiting clear-cutting for development of large acreage of tracts, which, which would, once it's in place, it would allow staff to review a tree survey as part of large development, and if there are trees that are worth preserving, or if it falls under the protected tree definitions of the ordinance, will have to be preserved and during the time of development, protected. And once it's all achieved, they get credit, landscaping credit for development landscaping. So that's the big picture. In terms of changing what we have now, right now, we don't have any language that clearly prioritizes preservation. And we do have requirements to plant trees in the right-of-way, like the mayor had mentioned at the workshop. We are taking those two things away. And on the development landscaping side, we are making some changes. One is to go from the planting requirements of one tree per five spaces. We are going from that to one tree per 10 spaces. And instead of having the tree planted in right-of-way, we are having them planted on the private property side along the street frontage. Those are the big changes. And then we are also including a requirement to include a landscaping buffer between residential uses and non-residential uses. And that would, that would be an additional protection for residential uses when a new commercial comes in. And when a new residential comes in with vacant commercial area, the residential master plan community would already have a buffer on their side. And then in adding to that, the buffer on commercial side would make it better in terms of protection. Now, on the tree preservation, one of the things that I would like everybody to note is, there are some exemptions included in the chapter, which talks about like properties which is, exists as a residential dwelling with certain amount of square footage. And then we have certain situations that are exempted, including if a property has already been approved either as a final plan or construction plan, or a master plan that has already been set in place prior to the adoption of the ordinance, those situations would be exempt to be fair and to allow for vested rights. That, that is pretty much it on the tree preservation side.
Perfect. Thank you, Joes, for that overview. I do want, again, to say thank you, Councilman Oplager, Councilman Lance, Councilman Bonner, for y'all's work on this with staff. It's been a long time coming, very excited with what you guys put together here, so it is much appreciated. Councilman Bonner, I see that you're muted. Is there something you'd like to?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to ask, and I apologize for having to step out, is the list of exempt, I mean, of the trees that we're going to preserve on the packet someplace?
Yes.
Because I know the other day in planning and zoning, there was some additions to what we had last seen, or I had last seen.
So yes, it should be under Section 77-44. It would be item number B under tree preservation. And second item under tree preservation is the exemptions, and it includes individual lots of records that are less than 20 acres in lot size that are existing as single-family.
I'm sorry, the tree types?
Oh, the listed.
In the discussion today, it was pine trees were added and?
So that was the only addition, and that came from the Parks, Parks and Rec Board.
Okay, so my question now is to, to counsel specifically here, and what are the thoughts about pine trees?
Are they saying, is Parks Board wanting to protect and preserve pine trees?
Protect pine trees.
I don't like.
That's what I got out of it, right?
Yes.
And the reasoning, the reasoning was that it was, there's a certain, is it the hawk?
Hawk.
That loves pine trees, and I wish Mary Ann was here. So Garrett might know, I don't know.
Oh, question. So it's my understanding, and I'm not a tree expert, but pine trees are dirty trees.
I hate them.
And they're not oaks, they're fast growers. They're not something that is, takes 100 years to grow, like an oak tree or, you know, other nicer trees. Slow growers tend to have a bigger value, a better impact on, we have a tree expert out there, so.
And here's my problem with pine trees. I, if they're overgrown on a lot, they're going to kill, you're not going to have grass on the lot. You can't grow anything around them except for iron skillets. I just don't like pine trees. I'm sorry. I love every other tree in the world. Well, I don't like chinaberry trees either. I'm, I'm just kind of wishing we could take that tree off the list, but I wanted to get.
You can take mine out of my yard if you'd like.
Are you two, you two have been on the working group. Are you both fine taking pines out, or do you want to keep it in?
This, this is the first I've heard of pine trees on it, and my backyard is full of pine trees, 11-foot tall. I don't want pine trees on this, I'm sorry.
Councilman?
I didn't think we had it on there.
Okay. Well, PDNZ asked that we consider putting it on because there was a concern about the hawks. But if we're not in support of that, then we can make that change.
And mayor, just a correction, it was the Parks and Recreation Board that requested that wanted to add pine trees, and the PDNZ was okay with that addition. And like you said, I mean, one of the reasonings mentioned at the meeting was that the hawks like those trees. And I want to make sure I clarify that. So it's not like every pine tree will be protected. If there is a pine tree out there which meets that size requirement of 19 inches diameter or circumference of 16 inches, that would be protected. But if there's a pine tree out there that has not reached that size, it's not protected.
So there still is some protection for pine trees, one over a certain size? Okay.
And that was kind of my, I'm sorry, that was kind of my point, is that if a person comes in and buys some property that has existing pine trees that are small trees, and they want to take them out, I want them to be allowed to do that.
So what page? So, what page is, is this on? Is this page six of 11? Because I see the list of protected tree species. I see oak, pecan, or pecan, depending on how you say it, magnolia, and elm. I don't see pine listed there.
So, the red line that you see was the original version, and then pine was added on the ordinance that was included and which was a recommendation by Parks Board. We didn't want to change the original red line?
Okay. Yes, Mayor, or, Councilman, are you good? Okay. Mayor Protem?
Okay, so according to internet, intel, intelligence, hawks, hawks love to be, yes, in pine trees, but also oak trees, and it's not so much that tree, it's the fact that they're, they're preferred for their height and their visibility. So, oaks, cottonwoods, sycamores, Douglas firs, and eucalyptus. So, by only protecting it for the sake of a hawk, I don't think that that's, justifies protecting a pine tree.
Okay. So, Counsel, before we make a vote on the main motion, I'll make a motion to amend Section 77-44B4 to remove letter E, which is pine.
Okay.
Do I have a, I have a second, which is Councilman Bonner. All those in favor of the motion to amend? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Do I have any other questions or comments on the ordinance as amended? Hearing none. Would one of you councilmen like to make the motion? Councilman Lands?
I'd like to make the motion to approve, with the exception of removing pine trees.
Absolutely, so we have a motion to approve the ordinance as amended. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, all right, we got a second to, no, you're good. Second to Mayor Protem. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. God save the trees.
Yes, just not the pine.
Just not the, we got to, thank you, we got to, we got to clap there, we got to clap.
Rossi for trees.
All right, agenda item number seven. Consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of ordinance 2025-0-15. We covered this during the workshop. Any council comments and/or questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for this agenda item?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Bonner. Do I have a second? We have a second from Councilman Perry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Now, we're moving. We have agenda item number eight. This is consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of ordinance We covered this as well during the workshop. Any comments or questions from council? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for this agenda item?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Perry. Do I, we have a second from Councilman Opeliger. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Agenda item number nine. This is consideration and possible action to approve on first and final reading, ordinance 2025-0-17. Now, we'll take separate votes on these, just because that's how we have to work it, but this is also tied to agenda item number 10, just for council's recollection. We did cover this a little bit during the, the workshop. Dan, you had mentioned that if we're looking to do a fall festival at Croy Park, and even just now in general, Croy Park does need more parking. So, can you talk to us a little bit about what the type of parking lot that's being proposed and, and how this is going to be paid for? Because this is the first time I've seen something like this in my almost six years.
Yeah, yeah. So, trying to get creative. So, the idea with Croy Park, obviously, it needs more parking even right now. If you have any type of, an event out there, there's just not enough parking. So, the, the, one of the problems is it's so close to Mustang Bayou, so any, any impervious, impervious cover that you were to put out there would also require detention, possibly even floodplain mitigation. So, the, the idea would be that we could do potentially pervious pavers, kind of like what the church at, it was called Overflow Church. What is it called now?
The names?
Well, Redemers has done it as well. Exactly. There, there are two locations. The Bull Docks are going to do pervious pavers over at the wedding facility. So, we, you know, we've got three under our belt now, so the idea was, and we, we visited with a contractor, they've come out and looked at it to make sure the geotech would work. So, it would, it would be engineering and surveying and the pervious pavers. For that amount, and, and obviously, we have a little bit of contingency in there, but it's about 100 parking places that we could add for, for that amount. So, the, the reason we put all of this together for you tonight, because, again, if, if we are going to do this Fall Fest in October, I would think that that would, you know, this would be a good catalyst to go ahead and jumpstart it. We've been wanting to add parking if, if we've got a thing in mind. So, then your next question would be, okay, sounds great. Staff, how are we going to pay for it? So, that's where I asked Rosie to, you know, we don't have this, what we, I guess we visited with Bobby to see, could the parking lot come from hot money, and it can't? Could it come from the, the 10 million, the drainage, parking, and all of that kind of good stuff, and it can't, from the, from the bond itself? So, Rosie, can I turn it over to you to talk about where you found it?
As you know, interest is doing a little bit better than previous years, so we are accruing more interest, earning more interest from our savings, from our investments, from our bonds. So, in order to be able to do this parking lot, I'm suggesting getting some of that interest to pay for the parking lot.
And so, the, the, the number that, that we've estimated, again, from talking to the engineer, the surveyor, and the contractor, we're estimating half a million dollars to, to put this parking lot in out there, and, and Rosie's figured out where we, where we can do that. We, it would take the budget amendment to actually move funds into basically creating a new project, if you will, if, if council's interested in doing that. If not, then what is the backup plan? So, the backup plan is we have talked to Hillwood, and they have identified, they call it, I guess, the grove, so the parking, excuse me, the, the open grassy area just to the north of Croy Park, on the right-hand side, assuming it's not muddy that day, if we can, they would let us park out there. The group that we were talking about potentially working with, they would provide shuttle service of some sort to get back and forth from that parking area. We could also potentially, we haven't talked to them yet, potentially use Brazoria County Annex, which is down the road at Croy and Croy, Croy Parkway and Croy Boulevard, I guess? Yeah. So, the annex down there, another option would be, you know, perhaps we could visit with New Hope. The only tricky part is if this is on a Saturday, you know, New Hope has Saturday services, so we haven't talked to them yet either. But, anyway, so those are kind of four different options, you know, partnering with some other spot to park, or even Pomona Elementary School, which is not too far to the north, so that's the fifth one, or building a parking lot.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Before we open it up to council comments, questions, just a question, Rosie, how much, is this everything that we've earned in interest during this fiscal year, or how much have we earned in interest that this would then leave us if we pulled this $500,000?
This is money that we have not earned yet. We've already met the budget that we had budgeted for on the earned income, so this is in addition to what we've already earned and what we've had budgeted.
So, this is, we're committing to spend money that we haven't earned yet?
Kind of, but we're not moving that money that fast, so we are able to continue to earn that kind of money, that kind of interest.
Can we legally commit to spending money in a contract that we don't have yet?
Well, I guess by the, by the budget amendment, that means we're moving money into the budget, so it would be there for this appropriation, correct?
We currently have interest money in there right now.
Okay. How much interest money do we have currently in there?
I want to say 2.4.
Okay. So, we have $2.4 million sitting in an interest account?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we're going to move $500,000 from that?
For the Croy Park, yes.
For the Croy Park, with the expectation that during the rest, rest of the fiscal year, we're going to earn that $500,000 back.
Actually, we'll be earning more than the $500,000.
How much are we projecting to earn throughout the rest of the fiscal year?
250, we're, about 250,000 per month is what we're at.
Okay. What are we planning to spend all that money on?
We can't spend all of it because we're still subject to arbitrage, so I, we can only spend like half of it, and what we've been doing is that interest goes back into the capital fund, and we use it to complete other projects that come along or that we need to do.
Okay.
Or any additional costs.
So, you said, how much do we have in there right now, Rosie?
I want to say around 2.4.
2.4, so if we can use about half of that, that's 1.2. If we're taking 500K from that, that means that we have 700K sitting in there currently that we could...
That is, that's correct.
Do we have that 700K allocated to anything right now?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Okay, that's helpful. I appreciate that. Appreciate that insight.
Did your numbers just then include the remaining months that we're going to earn?
No, no, that's just based off of what is sitting in there right now. So, we have 2.4 sitting in there right now. If we, we earn about 250 per month, 250K per month, so if we can have available 50% of that 2.4, all, this is all napkin math, then that's 1.2. If we take out the 500K, we still have 700K in interest plus what we're going to earn for the rest of this fiscal year.
There's another million left.
So, we'll have 1.7 million. That's not currently allocated to anything.
Exactly.
Okay. Good to know. Yes, I was originally going to, Counsel, my, my thoughts on this is I was originally going to say, hey, let's postpone it, I need, let's figure out what we're going to do with the City Hall Park, but we're not going to be asked to make any decisions on that until probably October anyways. We need more parking at, at Croy Park. I actually heard from somebody last week that was very impressed with all of the grasscutting that's happening by Brian Wilmer, our Parks employee there. So, kudos to him and Public Works for all the work that you guys have been doing out there, and, and the mulching and everything, it looks great. So, I hear from teams, Little League teams, all the time, they're like, man, the grass out there is really good, you guys are doing an awesome job as a city, but sometimes there's not enough parking, because if you have people playing soccer and then some people at the playground, then you don't have enough parking for the Little League teams to, to play. So, I'm in support of this. I think it's a, it's a good deal for the city, and knowing that we're not having to take tax dollars to do it, it's the interest earned, plus knowing there's a lot more interest sitting out there, that's, that's exciting. So, Counsel, any comments or questions?
I have questions.
Mayor Protem?
So, when it comes to parking, how many parking spaces do we currently have there now?
Do the quick math.
I'll say at least, say maybe 30?
Oh, wait, I think Colleen knows.
35.
35.
Okay, so there's currently 35 parking spaces there, and we're trying to grow it by another 100. And how many times a year are we expected to utilize that parking that we have there? Besides this festival?
I think it will be more utilized...
If we add the parking?
100%.
Have we done the math of if we did go the more financially, fiscally-stewarded route, where we actually, for our first event, shuttle like the church down the street did, Masters Road, rather than dumping the money in now? Because not only that, I think we also need to consider the fact that we're going to pay these people, right, the Manville Fall Fest, to host it, so we're paying for the parking, and we're also paying for them to host it. I just feel like I'd like to see where we're going to recoup some of that money also for the festival, along with the money that we're fronting for the parking. And basically, to me, it sounds like, well, hey, here's this thing, we want to do this, ooh, this is a good idea, so that we can also get parking, which I think is great. But I think that, you know, our citizens are going to message us, Facebook us, text us, asking us these questions. So, whether, whether or not we have the answers, I want to ask those questions to make sure that we can at least get as much clarity on it.
Any comments, sir, Dan?
Can I offer something?
Absolutely.
One of the discussions that came up, the biggest one, was about parking space for Croy Park in the Fall Festival parks. And I didn't think, I thought the, the discussion really said, we don't think the shuttle is the best way to go.
Okay.
Okay.
I can see that, just based on experience, on, on the experience of getting there and knowing, aw, man, they're going to have to shuttle you. I can see that 100%. That's going to end up happening anyway, eventually if it grows.
Well, the biggest problem was anybody in wheelchair, that presents problems for the shuttle buses, just the added traffic versus parking there and being there. I think we, we probably still will have to have off-site parking for the Fall Festival, regardless of putting another 100 spots out there.
Exactly, because according to this, we're anticipating 2,000 to 3,000 attendees. So, by us allocating $500,000 for 100 parking spots, I need it to make sense, because it seems to me like even if we go ahead with 100 parking spots, where are you going to put the other 1,900 people? We're still going to have to look for alternative parking, is, is where I'm, my brain is going.
I don't see this parking lot being, being the, the main jab at it for the Fall Festival. I see it as response that, I've heard the same things the last couple of weeks, is, as summer gets here, more people are using that park, and they're seeing the fact that there's not enough parking to do just the everyday things.
Perfect. So, that to me is, is a better argument than saying, we're going to have an event that holds about 2,000 people, we need to add 100 parking spaces.
No.
But if you, if you word it like that, we have people who want to utilize it through the summer, there's Little Leagues, there's people who are in wheelchairs that need accessibility, I can buy into that, easier than I can justifying 100 spots for 2,000 people coming to the event. Either way, we slice and dice it, we're going to have to figure out some form of transportation for that event.
This way, at least you can go back to the citizens and bring up the question about paying for it and say, look, we figured out a way to pay for it without tax dollars.
Agreed. And I love that Rosie was so resourceful and creative, making it happen.
I, I've seen creative parking at those sporting events because there's not enough parking, so it's needed.
I think, I think as far as the Croy Park Festival parking, I think we're going to, the best idea was to utilize, get with the school district and try and use the elementary school that was the closest actual parking lot of anywhere, but we've got to figure out, that's not for the subject, so never mind.
Well, with that being said, I think that answers my question as far as, Mayor Dan, just to bring you up to date, so my question was around validating that we're going to add 100 parking spaces in there, but for the, for the festival, anticipating 2,000 to 3,000 people anyway, we're still going to need to have some off-site transportation service, but the way Keith presented it was, this isn't just for the festival, it's more for summer parking, people in wheelchairs, accessibility, and for the general use of the park to be utilized to its fullest capacity, and then also the Fall Festival and working around that. So, that I can get behind, with the caveat of it's not going to hurt our tax dollars.
Yep. If we got 100 spaces, now we have a handicap parking area at that park for the Fall Festival.
And I love that.
I think it's great. And Dan, this parking lot is going to be just, I guess, technically north of where the existing one is, right off to that side?
Yes, sir, that's the idea, it would, so as soon as you come in, it'd be to your left, yes, so heading towards the bayou.
Well, I want to applaud staff for finding a creative way to pay for this, and I think that the talk of a Fall Festival sparked some, hey, let's see what's going on, and Rosie, appreciate you and your team diving in and, and finding a, a solution. Counsel, any other comments, questions? No. Hearing none. Do I have a motion for agenda item number nine?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Lands, we have a second from Councilman Hudson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Agenda item number 10, consideration and possible action to approve infrastructure improvements at Croy Park to include parking lot expansion, engineering, and utilities at a cost not to exceed $500,000. Authorize the city manager to make the expenditure. Comments or questions about this, Counsel?
Question.
Mayor Protem?
Are we going out to bid for this, or do you already have a preferred vendor that we want to write a $500,000 check to?
We, so, right now, I don't think we have any vendors that are part of the buy board or tips or anything that, that we know of, so it would have to go out for bid, since it's over 50,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. And Dan, just a question, and I don't know what the possibility would be to do this. I'd love to see if when we put together this design to have a few trees planted around the expanded parking lot, just from an aesthetic standpoint, continue to, to add to the park over time. That'd be great. Councilman Bonner?
I believe we talked about just that fact. Brian brought it up about putting some boxes out there to put the trees in that protects them.
Okay.
And he brought that up.
Awesome.
I have one question. How long will the bid process take?
Yeah, we're going to have to expedite it for sure.
Because the estimates that you got for doing the actual work was how long?
It, it's going to be very tight. That's why we were, you know, if there was somebody that already had the, the buy board or the tips, you know, the preferred vendors or whatever that have already been pre-negotiated, that makes life a lot more expedient. But we haven't been able to find one just yet. So it's, it's going to be tight. It's going to be very tight.
All right. Time to boogie. All right, counsel, do I have a motion for Agenda Item Number 10?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Bonner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Lands. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. Thank you, everyone. Agenda Item Number 11, consideration of possible action on the Manville Fall Festival. Approve the proposal from Y N M F A and authorize the city manager to negotiate the terms and execute the final contract. Counsel, we discussed this during our workshop. I want to make sure we have more time to do it. Dan, one of the things, as I just read through this agenda item, it says approve the proposal. Is the proposal that we see in our packet, is that final or is that still up for negotiation? It's more so, I would like to, if we make a motion, just to say, hey, let's give you authority to, to negotiate it, but I don't think that we're final and I'd love to see it come back before us before it's ultimately.
I want to see numbers.
Go ahead.
Well, and that's, that's what we're concerned about is, so right now, it's a scope, basically a scope that they've, they've provided to us here are the bullet points. So we need to negotiate the contract itself. They're, just like with the parking lot, the, the amount of time that they're going to need. So if, if we could do that by the next meeting, I mean, we just have to get it done quickly, you know?
Yeah. Okay. So what are some decision points? Are you needing any input right now? I know that the Beer and Wine Garden was a discussion point, but it seems like counsel was generally in support of that if it works out.
The, the decision, exactly. Well, so, I mean, in fairness, so there, there, the decision point, number one, was do we want to use this group as, as a turnkey group, right? That's, that's number one. What is the budget that we want to set? Because that's the number that's a placeholder in there right now. Is that the budget that we want to set or not to exceed number? Alcohol, yes or no? The daytime versus the nighttime? And I wish, Lisette had a good conversation with Cree, the lady at your neighborhood Farmer's Market. I think our acronym is backwards there. Shouldn't it be Y N F M A? I think so, instead of M F A. Anyway, to talk to them, it's, it's a whole different event if we have to bring in stage lights and those kind of things. If this goes past daylight hours, they said that they're probably not equipped to be able to do that by October. So if, if that's a must, that it has to be a nighttime thing or have a nighttime component?
It's dark early.
It, it does get dark early. Yep.
I thought lights was in there for the festival, though.
Not, not, not stage lights to go. Right now, what they have proposed is from 11 to 5. That's what we, we talked about the other day.
So what lights are in there?
Where do you see that?
Trying to get it.
So it says, Dan, right there, if you go to the third page where it says Festival Highlights.
Right.
That underneath Live Music and Entertainment, the second bullet point, full stage setup with lighting.
Right.
Is that just like the fancy like boo 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 lights?
Right, stage lights. It's not like you can see it in the dark kind of lights.
Okay.
Right.
Well, let's, so you said group budget alcohol hours. Is there any feedback points else that you guys are needing?
No. And so the, the group, I mean, so to zoom out for a minute, so where we first started was to visit with Colleen to see if, is this something, you know, could, could, since she's had such a success with Manville Market, could, could we add more onto her plate? And the thinking was that, hey, whenever this building gets under construction, if Manville Market moves out to Croy Park, could this just be an expansion? The, the, the calendar date that we've sort of identified would be the third Saturday instead of the first Saturday. So it wouldn't conflict, but maybe it would be an extension or expansion of. And so we did, we had, had a great visit with Colleen and it's just like the Farmer's Market. It was something that she had done before, but she's done it and made it amazing, right? In one year, I mean, it's fantastic. So could it be done? Yes. So that, that's an option as well. The difference would be, it wouldn't be a turnkey. It would be, we'd still have a lot of involvement of, I'm sorry, Colleen still here, actually? Yeah, just dawned on me. So, you know, okay, then we're still coordinating the, the stage, we're still coordinating the restrooms, we're still coordinating the, the acts, the, you know, the musical groups and everything like that. So it, it can be done. I don't know if we can do it by October, I think was, was the concern. So that's why we went this other route. So that, that's still a decision point, you know, for counsel there.
Well, let's, counsel, let's kind of hit these, hit these few items here, talking about the, the group first. As I look at it, I'm, I'd be fine with using this group. I'd want to make sure that there's a partnership that they have with the Manville Market because I think as they talk about doing a vendor market, let's partner there with Colleen. And I'd love Colleen to, almost if she can, even ride side, side saddle with this because we've talked about doing something like this in-house eventually, not having to, to outsource all of this. And it could be a great opportunity for Colleen to pick up on ideas and things for the Manville Market. And who knows, maybe one day she works for the, works for the city and, and is our event coordinator. I'm just, just saying, you never know. So for me, I'm, I'd be fine with using this group. I think they've, they've shown us the quality of work that they do, so I, I trust that. Counsel, what do you, what do you think about first focusing just solely on using the group? Are you okay with that or would you like to explore other options? Councilman, we'll go Councilman Bonner, Councilman Lands, and then Mayor Protam.
I like the idea of Colleen being involved in this just because I trust her to not let this other group do what they want and, and cut parts of the market out and, and cut our involvement in this. We still need approval on the bands and, and all kinds of stuff because that was one of the big talks we had is what type of music? We want to make it that it fits all of Manville, not just one group.
It needs to be jazz and, and 70s rock, right Bobby?
I mean, I'm fine with that. We, we talked about jazz and 70s rock. We talked about country. We talked about Cajun or.
Zydeco.
Zydeco. I'm sure we're going to have a group that wants some type of pop or, or the other stuff that I don't listen to. And that's fine. Every, every, this needs to be a, a whole city deal, not just one group of the city. So I, I trust Colleen to help us keep on track if, if we use this other company. That's just my thought there.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lands?
Okay, I'm going to go back a little bit about the lighting. So it does, does say full stage setup with lighting. And then we go down here to public amenities. It says area lighting. And then we go down here to transportation service. Now let's see. Environmental and safety services. It says event lighting for event walkways and parking lots. I think lighting's covered. So I, I don't want to see any crawfishing on the lighting part.
By whom? Crawfishing, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, she puts it in.
We said earlier that, that lighting wasn't in it.
Them back.
Lighting wasn't part of it? But lighting is obviously part of it, right? Am I, did I mis, misunderstand what I heard?
Whenever we ask them after our meeting the other day about going into 8:00 PM, they don't, they don't feel comfortable being able to go until 8:00 PM.
But what other part of this isn't really in there?
Well, I think, I think what they're getting at there, Dan, is lighting is mentioned at three different spots. They're saying that they have concern about being able to provide the necessary lighting to go to 8:00 PM. What is, in these three different sections, I guess some clarity would need to be provided is what is lighting actually represent?
And why do we need lighting at 5:00 in the afternoon? I mean, they say lighting.
Just some clarity, some clarity there.
So I'd, I'm sorry, I, I think, I think the, the 8 o'clock is, is what we're wanting.
Well, we'll, we'll get to, we'll get to that in a second, Councilman. That'll be item number four in regards to using the group. Are you, are you open to using the group or would you rather us look, look elsewhere?
Using this group?
Yes, sir.
If they meet our, our requirements, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Councilman Hope Liger?
I'm fine.
Okay. Councilman Perry? Mayor Protam?
Okay, so a couple of things that I noticed here. It says initial next steps, the city will submit a 25% non-refundable retainer within 10 days of receipt of contract. What, 25% of what is my question? Because I don't see numbers, I don't see a proposal here. I just see they're proposing something, but there's not a actual proposal. And to your point, Councilman Lands, it says in conclusion, this proposal is based on taking place Saturday, October 18th from 11:00 AM until 5:00 PM. The festival will bring festive energy, charm in a dynamic afternoon and evening time slot. Guests can look forward to live music, beer and wine garden, food trucks, pumpkin patch, et cetera, et cetera, all designed to create a memorable experience. So there's a couple of things here that I, I think this group is okay to work with based on them presenting the last time. I think they can probably get the job done. I just, there's more questions than answers at this point.
So we have an openness to the group. Councilman Hudson, would you be open to seeing us partner with the group?
Yes.
Okay. Let's now jump down to topic of conversations, which has been hours. Councilman Bonner, what would you prefer to see the hours as? Right now, it's proposed 11 to 5. Would you prefer to see other hours?
The other day, we talked 2 to 8 in the sub-group. I think it was 2 to 8 is what I'd like to see.
Okay. Councilman Bonner's 2 to 8. Councilman Lands?
2 to 8.
Councilman Hope Liger?
I would define 2 to 8.
Personally, I like an 11 to 5. I'm not opposed to 2 to 8, but if 2 to 8, if they, if they come back and say that it's not going to be, they can't do it, if we switch to 2 to 8 or if it drastically increases the cost, I would like to see us be okay. Remember, this is the first step. So would you gentlemen say option A is your preference, but you're okay within 11 to 5 if they say that's a no deal for them?
Yeah, I just don't want them to say no deal right off the bat. I want to see.
Why?
Yeah, what, are you saying it's going to be $5,000 extra to do this or are you talking $30,000? You know, I, it's not enough to know, but I just don't want them to know I'm okay going to, to the all daylight deal, but I, you know, I don't want them to know that ahead of time. I'd like to see what they can come up with if we say that's what we'd want.
Okay, absolutely. The reason why I lean, I, I think from a simplicity standpoint, 11 to 5, you know, it's traffic control and, you know, being able, if we're transporting people back and forth, we are going to have to use our police department that's out there, keeps it safer. If we're now, and we'll get to it in a second, if we do include beer and wine, the later that it gets, the more drinking that's going to occur. I know I don't want to have my family around that. So you'll have families that will probably end up leaving before dinnertime. You know, how does this 11 to 5 impact, or 2 to 8, how does it impact food trucks? I think that's a dynamic to consider because they're going to miss the lunch instead of, you know, now they're only going to have dinner when in this scenario, they could probably get both sides of things. That's just some of the thinking that after the meeting that was had, that is going through my head there. Now, I'm not opposed to the 2 to 8. My preference is 11 to 5, but I'm okay if it's 2 to 8. Councilman Perry?
I'm okay with 11 to 5. And if we, if, if they can do the 2 to 8 without issues, that's fine.
Okay. Mayor Protam?
I don't have a preference. I think either will work fine as long as we get all of the logistics, the money, the entertainment, and all the other things work cohesively, I'm open to, to whatever works best.
Okay. Councilman Hudson?
I think for our first extravaganza like this, 11 to 5, because you're going to have some issues that is not foreseen. I think 11 to 5 for the first time out, and they're going to come up. So.
So you guys have a good, you guys have a good.
I want to open to either.
So who's the one that was open to either? Was that?
Sorry, I'm open to whatever makes sense.
We need to, you need to be, you need, you need to cast a tiebreaker.
You need me to cast a tiebreaker?
You got to cast a tiebreaker. Which one do you prefer?
I'm going to spin it and say something completely different. If you ask me.
You've got two out, two options.
Honestly, I have other questions. I mean, have they done this before? Have we looked at data? Other fall festivals that have been successful that are only in the day, that end early and providing wine and beer ending at 5? I mean, I can see that logic. Okay, fine, 11 to 5.
Sorry, guys.
It'll be the first one that's ever not been denied in the whole area of Missouri County.
But this is our first one.
I'm just saying, it'll be the first one during the day. We'll find out.
All right, we're trying.
What are we going to find out?
Just the wine garden is kind of a weird thing to host in the day, you know? So that's kind of where I'm, I'm leaning towards later day, early evening, and by maybe 7:00. The sun's going to go down around this date anyway, around 5:36. You start clearing people out. If we don't, maybe logistics, the 11, the 5 o'clock might work better just because it's sunlight, you know?
That's really good.
Less riffraff. I don't know. I'm just saying, a, a music concert, music, if you're adding bands in there, things don't really start to get lively until the sun goes down. That's.
So it seems like you're talking yourself into 2 to 8.
Yeah. Well, because here's the way I'm looking at it, is if I'm looking at it, I really want to provide an experience that has both pumpkin patch, kids zone, food court, daytime activities, but you want it to be a real music fest. I mean, there's music fest out that we know of that go 24 hours, but really a music fest is day or night.
What about 1 to 7?
Fine, 1 to 7.
There you go.
So let's.
But then there's families who want to bring their kids early before naptime to do pumpkin patch and all those things.
Let's make it 7 to 7, just an all-day, all-day thing. I think what I would be open towards is, is, Dan, if you, I think getting a little bit of an extension, maybe instead of it being six hours, maybe, maybe if there's an extension of making it until, you know, 11 to 7, so you get that nighttime feel. I want what's best for, what's best for the community. I think the first thing is let's go to them and, Councilman, as you said, let's see if they're even willing to extend it past 5 because they might come back and they might say, they might say, no, we need justification as to why, but your points are right there, Mayor Protam. You know, that's, you know, after 5 is a little bit when music starts hip happening a little bit. I think running it to 8, you know, we'll see, but I'd be open to seeing if they can push it a little bit, maybe until 6:00 PM or, or 7:00 PM. But I like that, that 11:00 AM time slot, especially from a farmer's market perspective, is, is great. If you start to push it back, then I don't think you're going to get as much traction at a, at a farmer's market or a vendor market perspective, in my opinion.
And I think we were still on me, right?
Um.
My questions, my, my feedback on this?
Yes.
Okay. So also here, it does state.
No, no.
Under entertainment, that they would include entertainment plan development, music band selection, working with Manville representative, stage, sound systems, management setup, lighting, sound, electrical, and I think that goes to the stage lighting.
sound, electrical, and I think that goes to the stage lighting. I don't know that that has to do with night lighting, which is probably something that they most likely will come back and say that is gonna add another cost, because then you've got to light up the park, you got to light up the streets. That is definitely gonna most likely change what this looks like.
It says event lighting.
Does it? Maybe I missed that.
Walkways, parking lots.
Oh, there it is. You're right. Event logisticals and safety, pre-event walkthrough also. Look, I like this group. I think they've done their job. I think they've presented well to us. But again, I'm apprehensive on certain things, because it is the first one, and I want to make sure that we're asking the right questions, because oftentimes when we jump into things like this, we don't even know what we should be asking. So I'd rather ask as much as possible and get as much information back before we have a disaster on our hands, which I trust everyone that we won't. But still, we, we have to know what the budget is. What are they proposing? How much can they do? How much of this will we partner with? And are they gonna be okay knowing that they, they put on Manville, I'm sorry, they put on farmer's markets? Will they be okay with our instruction to work with Colleen? Because we already have that.
I think they've said.
The competitor that we went with.
Yeah, that was one of the first things that we brought up with them, and, and they absolutely are okay with it. They said they typically have an area for the local vendors, because, I mean, they, they have access to many, many more vendors, which is great, but if it's somebody from Katy and Humble or whatever, that's fine, but what about our vendors? So we want to carve out, here's the Manville Market, and that way, you know, for the, for the folks that normally get to come on the first Saturdays, they might want to participate in this, and there's more traffic.
Yes.
You know, so we'll, we'll have to just work that out. How big is that, that area, if you were, local, you know, the local part of it?
And then again, to our previous conversation with them, as we know, people who put these markets on, they charge their vendors to come. They charge the food establishments to come. They, they charge, so they're making money. Again, like you said, they are for profit. So although the city wants to host this, I don't want it to be to where we're, they're profiting off of this only. It needs to be a partnership. So.
So to go for an item alcohol, is everybody good with there being beer and, beer and wine garden?
I am, as long as they're licensing it and they're providing T A B C certified bartenders. You know, they're in charge of the liability on that. I'm sure we gotta work with, with Bobby and Tammy to figure out how does that jointly work. But I, I think she's probably done this before, so I think she'll be able to, to figure that out. But I, I just want to have us have the least amount of liability, but I've been to bunches of these things, and these, the wine gardens and the beer gardens go well. I, I think there's some room on negotiation for, do we get a cut of that? You know, I'm, I'm big for seeing how much of a cut we can get off not only the beer and wine garden, but the food and, you know, anything.
Yeah, and if you notice on the, so the flyer, she added where it has the beer and wine garden, working with Manville representatives. So Lisette talked to her last week about that, hey, here's, here's what we would like to do. We would like to have, you know, a portion of that. And Tammy mentioned a good point, you know, so none of our events, the extravaganza, trunk or treat, Santa Claus, I mean, none of those are revenue generating things. I mean, these are things that we do for the community, right? So it'll be a bonus, obviously, if we're able to recoup costs, but, I mean, this is, this is a community activity. So I know it's weird to think about it, but it's not, hey, how can we, this isn't, I don't think intended to be a revenue generator. Hopefully, it gets to be.
I, I think. I think it, it is eventually, but I think this first year.
Eventually, they can pay for itself would be ideal.
Right, because we, we talked about that. Eventually, you know, we go for sponsorships, and we're covering all this cost, and, and, but this is gonna be our learning year. That's why we talked about the amount of monies that we're, we're talking about taking from the hot tax, and, and we're gonna learn, and we're gonna figure out, is this something that's sustainable to do down the line, and, and how do we do that without having to drag that money every year? We don't want to do that. We want to figure that part out, but we've got to start someplace to learn those things.
Absolutely. Councilman Lands, you go with the beer and wine garden?
Yes.
All right. Councilman Hope Liger?
Yes.
I'm fine with it as well. Just a question, would we be not allowing anybody to be YOB if we allow this?
No.
So no cool, no coolers allowed, nothing, nothing like that? Okay?
That's gonna be tough.
How do you do it without, how do you do it without fencing?
As long as we're clear of any liability as a city.
You're good. Mayor Protem?
I'm fine with it as well, as long as we're clear of the liability. However, I do feel like we are already investing in this by pouring parking and transportation and stuff like that. What I don't want is for us to hash over another $300,000, $400,000 for an event where someone else will profit, and we, that's taxpayer money. So we just have to be conscientious of that. So I want to make sure that we get those numbers back. Thank you.
Councilman Hudson?
I'm just concerned about parking issue. And, but I can go, I, I know it'll be better. People will enjoy themselves better with the 8 o'clock deal. We might as well find out if it's feasible or what. Liquor, of course.
Sounds good.
It goes along with the program.
Seems like a lot of us have talked ourselves into doing it a little bit later, so thinking those thoughts out loud. Now, the next thing is the, the budget. The proposed budget is 150,000. Obviously, that's not finalized. We need to have negotiations, get all those numbers, Mayor Protem, but in my mind, that is a good not to exceed amount. Councilman Bonner, you good with that?
Yes.
Councilman Lands? Councilman Hope Liger? All right. We've got thumbs up for, for that not to exceed amount. If there's any way to get something back before us at the next meeting, let's, let's see what we can do. I think still some information there, but Dan, does that give you guys a lot of the, kind of the concerns that council has, clarity on items?
Very helpful. The last one is probably, could have been the first one. So we, we need to rally around the name of it. What we landed on the other day was the Manville Fall Festival. You know, when it first started off, it was a music festival. Whatever it is, we just, once we start, you know, getting synergy around that, we want to keep it.
Colleen, do you have any ideas about the name?
Fall for Manville.
Fall for Manville?
I like that.
Falling in love with Manville, with the event, but it's a fall festival.
I like that. Council, what do you think about that?
I kinda like it.
Could be a trust fall as the photo.
If my wife is still listening, I would have to say autumn. That's her favorite word, autumn, instead of fall. Yeah, so.
That's true.
Well, council, think about that. Colleen, if you have any additional ideas, send them, send them over to us. I like that idea. But I don't know if we need to, when do we need to decide on that, Dan? Is it like now, or we got some? Two weeks? Two weeks? Okay, sounds good. Okay, so we need action. Action to authorize you to negotiate, Mr. City Manager. All right, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and bring us back an update here in two weeks with the information requested. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second from Councilman Perry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Item number 12, consideration possible action to approve a special call to city council meeting on May 13, 2025 for the canvas of the May 3, 2025 general election. We talked about that during the workshop. Tammy, the question that we just had was about the cost. Did you get the cost for us, an estimate?
The August, or the May 2023 runoff election was $13,731 and 12 cents.
12 cents, really?
Yes. And again, it's totally based on what other entities will be involved, if there's anybody else, or whether we'll just be the one and only.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome. You know, I think we, it was one, I think Alvin might have had something on that ballot as well. I think it was us and Alvin.
All right, council, do I have a motion for this agenda item?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Bonner. Do I have a second? I'll make a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. As, you know, kind of a leadway into it, we do have the runoff election. Want to encourage people to get out and vote for that. Also, council, our city manager sent us out a list of potential phase three road and sidewalk projects. So if you have not had a chance to respond to that email with your top five priorities, please do. I know we're looking to get that on the agenda here soon and, and get, get moving on some of those items, so just make sure to give a response there. Councilman Lands, do you have an item?
No, I would like to say, I'd like to thank Colleen for staying. You know, maybe she might want to run for council, because she's the only one seems like to be able to stay the whole meeting. You know, it's very impressive. Thank you.
Some haven't even been to a meeting that ran. Can you imagine that?
All right, well, Councilman Perry, I want to give you the honor of doing the final motion here. I think, you know, this is gonna be your last city council meeting with us, and it has been an honor and a privilege to, to serve alongside you. I've gleaned much from your wisdom and your, your perspective, and I know you're still gonna stay involved. You're still gonna, we're still gonna have you around here. We'll find something to appoint you to, but I want to say thank you for your years of service. It means a lot.
Thank you very much. It has been an honor to serve with all of you, city staff, great, great department heads, and no, I won't be gone. I'll still be involved in community service, just not elected service.
All right. Well, will you see us out with a motion, sir?
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion that we close out this session of city council.
I have a second, Ed.
We have a second from Councilman Hudson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. We'd stay in it. We'd stay in it.